Good afternoon and welcome to the November regular meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure your microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Sean Cornet and I am Chair of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Amtel Siddiqui, Susan Mallon, Heather Campbell, Sheree Nysen-Jordan, Kelly Ogle, Robert Tange, Ayo Adidran, and Councillor Jennifer Wyness. And Councillor Wong, sorry. Today is the beginning of a new year for us, and so we're also welcoming two new Commissioners appointed by City Council. Councillor Terry Wong and Commissioner Samuel Hope, welcome to our board. We look forward to having you on our team. This particular new year also unfortunately means we have to say goodbye to more former colleagues than usual. The province temporarily expanded our commission to 15 people last April. However, Alberta's new police act requires us to return to 12 Commissioners this fall. Marilyn North-Pagan, Kim Lynch Proctor, Theresa Rossell, Jeff French, and Raj Daliwal have not returned for another term. I want to personally thank each of them for their perspectives, expertise, and passion that they brought to our commission. A lot has been accomplished over time on this board, and they've both helped us and the Calgary Police Service to be better at our roles. We will miss them and wish them all the best in their next endeavors. Today's Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfeld. Superintendent Smart, would you please introduce the others you expect to speak during today's meeting?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Councillors, Commissioners. Thank you for having us this afternoon. My name is Superintendent Claire Smart, and I'm the Executive Officer for Chief Newfeld. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to the executive leadership team, and I'm going to start to my far right. So we have Acting Executive Director Tricia Spadman of the Finance Division, Executive Director Catherine Murphy of the Legal and Regulatory Services Division, Deputy Chief Raj Gill of the Bureau of Community Policing, Deputy Chief Katie McClellan of the Bureau of Service and Community Support, Chief Constable Mark Newfeld, Deputy Chief Chad Toffick of the Bureau of Corporate Performance, Acting Deputy Chief Ryan Aliff of the Bureau of Investigative Services, Chief People Officer Kim Armstrong, Bureau of People and Organizational Development, and Director Mike Nun, Strategic Communications Section. So thank you, Chair.
And thank you to everyone for being with us here today. For those not familiar with our role, our commission is a body of 10 community members and two city councillors appointed by City Council and the Government of Alberta. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us instead of elected officials. We provide direction to the police through the chief, police policies, monitoring the police complaint process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight regular meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. We also have several private monthly committee meetings where Commissioners work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. Our commission is meeting today on the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, made up of the Sichiga, Bagani, Amscabibi, Gani, and Ginai First Nations. It is also home to the Iathka-Nakota-Wiscatabe First Nations, comprised of the Chiniki, Berespa, and Good Stony First Nations, as well as Tsitsina First Nation. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta. Our commission is committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people who share this land with us. Our commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with all Calgarians who are Black, Indigenous, or other people of color. For those of you joining us for the first time today, allow me to provide a brief overview of the format for our meeting. The public session of this meeting is being livestreamed, and a recording will be posted online so we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, commission members, and commission staff. Commissioners will have the chance to ask questions or make comments after each one. Once we've completed the presentations, we'll move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Those who are registered to speak will then be called on by name and will have a chance either to ask a question or make a presentation for your consideration. Following the public participation, we will close the public portion of the meeting with the chief and I taking questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to observe the media availability, but only media can participate. To start our agenda items, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissioners. Hearing and seeing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Seeing and hearing no requests, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items and reports that all Commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda be brought forward for discussion? Hearing and seeing no requests, I declare both the agenda and the consent agenda approved as presented. For my Chair's report, I would like to start by once again recognizing two people that received our commission's new Lifetime Achievement Awards on Friday. The Lifetime Achievement in Community Policing Award was presented to Maggie McKillop. Ms. McKillop has worked domestic violence prevention and intervention for over two decades. As a caseworker, then team leader, and now Executive Director at Homefront, she has worked tirelessly to build relationships with the Calgary Police Service, courts, and other justice system participants. Her work has transformed how families in Calgary are supported after having a police interaction due to domestic conflict or violence. The Lifetime of Distinguished Service Award was presented to Detective Christina Witt. Detective Witt has had an exemplary career as an investigator and academic. She has not only contributed to over 200 suspicious death investigations, but she has provided training to officers in effective investigations and undercover techniques. In addition to her regular duties, Detective Witt also earned a PhD and has published numerous research papers on investigative techniques while teaching the next generation of police officers at Mount Royal University. Our commission is honored to recognize these two outstanding individuals this month. We presented the awards at the Services Annual Chiefs Awards Gala, where several members of our commission were proud to also help celebrate over 50 community and Calgary Police Service members for their exceptional courage, valor, community building, lifesaving efforts, and professional excellence. Congratulations to all the award recipients and thank you for your service to Calgarians. A few other noteworthy things happened at our commission this month. Two Commissioners were able to go on ride-alongs with frontline officers to learn more about what a day in the life of an officer is like. Our commission is committed to engaging with more members of the service, and ride-alongs give us a valuable opportunity to hear directly from those on the front line. Our commission also just completed our annual organizational meeting where my colleagues elected me once again to be Chair. I am humbled by their trust in me and look forward to another year serving in this role. And finally, our commission submitted a net zero budget adjustment to City Council for 2024, meaning that we did not request any funding in addition to the four-year budget that we submitted last year. As I always do, I would like to also take a moment to recognize some of the ways the service has delivered on Calgarians' priorities this month. The month started with the service announcing they had seized over $2 million worth of cocaine, fentanyl, and MDMA, and laid 14 criminal charges following an investigation that started by an anonymous tip. The service also shut down two alleged drug trafficking operations at a downtown tattoo parlor and at a home in Earleton. Thank you to the members for getting these drugs off the street and helping to make it a safer place. Investigators also continued to reexamine old cases, proving once again that they do not stop seeking justice for victims of serious crimes. Homicide investigators that charged a man in 2019 in connection with a 1994 double murder continued working the case to try and identify a second person involved. This month, they did identify a second suspect and laid charges. In cooperation with the RCMP, homicide investigators also helped charge a man in the 1975 homicide of Pauline Brazo, a 16-year-old Métis woman who was taken from Calgary and later found dead near Cochrane. Sexual assault investigators laid charges in their own historical case where a youth leader is alleged to have sexually assaulted a youth over a decade ago. Thank you to our service members for not letting the time that has passed prevent victims and their families from getting justice. Officers on the front line have also had another busy month where our city has seen several deeply concerning acts of public violence, including shootings. While the number of shootings is down 26% compared to last year, recent high-profile shootings and stabbings have put the public at risk and shaken many Calgarians' sense of safety. The officers that have responded to these incidents have shown incredible professionalism and calm in very chaotic situations. The investigators and forensics experts that have worked hard after the fact to identify those responsible have also been doing amazing work under pressure. Frontline officers have also been managing a heavier workload with the regular protests over the war between Israel and Hamas. The emotions during these protests are understandably high, and officers often find themselves in know-and-situations where decisions have to be made quickly. While we know there are questions and concerns in the community around protest policing, we also know these situations are very difficult for officers, and I want to thank all the members who have been working hard to try and keep peace in our city. Finally, I want to acknowledge the work that the service has done around crime prevention. Operation Freeze launched again, giving officers the option of issuing positive tickets to kids that can be redeemed for a free drink. The Domestic Conflict Unit has also been active as November is Family Violence Prevention Month. Not only has their unit been working with partners to educate on domestic conflict, but they also announced this month that the rates of domestic violence are dropping as more people reach out for help earlier. On behalf of our commission, I want to thank all the members of the service for their hard work to deliver on the priorities that Calgarians have expressed. Thank you very much. With that, I will conclude my Chair's report and will now move on to the presentations from the Calgary Police Service. The first presentation relates to a promise our commission and the service made to Calgarians in the fall of 2020. City Council held public hearing on racism in our city, and one concern that was raised by the public was that the presence of police officers in schools may be impacting students from racialized communities differently than others. A review of the program was conducted in two phases, with the latest phase engaging racialized students. The report we are about to discuss outlines what was heard during that process and the path that the service would like to take as a result. So Chief Newfeld, would you please go ahead with the presentation, and then we'll follow with the discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you first for the generous acknowledgement of some of the good work that's gone on in the last month. I really appreciate that. On behalf of the service and the members of the executive leadership team here, I'd also like to extend a warm welcome to Commissioner Wong and Commissioner Hope on your first meeting. Look forward to working with you, and congratulations. I know you had your organizational meeting, and so congratulations to all the other leaders that will continue on in those executive positions as part of the broader commission structure. I'll move to 5.1, as you mentioned, School Resource Officer presentation, and I will ask Deputy McClellan to introduce the presentation.
Thanks very much, Chief. Good afternoon, Commission members, and welcome to Commission members as well. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the most recent update on the work that we have been doing on our School Resource Officer program. My apologies for all of the documents that we sent you away, but there's lots of information, and with my team today, we'll go over a very brief summary of all those documents. I'm pleased today to be joined by Superintendent Rashid, Youth Services Acting Inspector Jas Keenth, who's online, Jason Archibald and Carrie Rack from our Strategic Planning and Evaluation Unit, and two of our very valuable community partners, Frances Boache and June Narvell from Action Dignity, as well as Katrina White from the City of Calgary Engage Resource Unit. And also online, we have John McDonald from the Calgary Catholic School District, who is a Superintendent of Learning Services. As the Chair alluded to, many of you recall in 2020, the Calgary Police Service committed to the citizens of Calgary that we would be relentless in our pursuit of anti-racism, diversity, and inclusion. As part of that commitment, it was determined that a comprehensive independent review of the School Resource Officer program was needed to ensure the program was operating in the best interests of all Calgary students. Our SROs, School Resource Officers, assist with early intervention, mentorship, and education, to just mention a few. They also build relationships with staff, parents, and administrators by being in the schools on a regular basis. Our SROs can work with schools to deliver presentations on everything from drug awareness to bullying and healthy relationships. They also help facilitate school lockdown drills to ensure staff, teachers, and students know how to safely respond to threats in and near their schools. SROs are also the main source of referrals into the CPS Youth Diversion Program, which aims to keep youth out of the justice system by delivering extrajudicial measures and connecting young people and their families with community resources and many other programs. We know there has been a lack of evaluation of the program's effectiveness in the past. We need to ensure that we can measure whether the program provides positive outcomes for all students, which is why we commissioned an independent review. We created a project team with representatives from the service and engaged our partners at Argyle, the City of Calgary, and Action Dignity. Together, we have spent the last two and a half years engaging with students, parents, teachers, school staff, and school boards to hear their thoughts on our School Resource Officer program. What is working, where can we improve, and how can we move forward together to provide equitable outcomes for all students? We know from the relationships we have developed with our communities that not everyone's experience with police is the same. That's why it was so important throughout this engagement to ensure we heard from as many people as possible, including students who are racialized, Indigenous, who identified as members of the 2SLGB2QIA+ community, and students with disabilities along with their families. The SRO engagement analysis is now complete. It is important to note that the first phase of the evaluation was to conduct extensive community engagement. The results of that engagement will inform how we move forward with the recommendations. This was intentional and strategic. Had our community engagement revealed that we should discontinue the SRO program, for example, our future plan would look very different. But, as Jason and Carrie will speak to, the engagement revealed the opposite. The people we consulted want the program to continue with, of course, some refinements and enhancements. An implementation team has been created and will start with identifying the mission, the vision, and mandate of the SRO program, which will then inform the implementation framework you're about to see. I'm very pleased to be here with this team and our community partners to present the results of this review and update you on our plans for the program's future. Superintendent Rashid?
I apologize. Good afternoon. Thank you, Deputy Chief McClellan. Thank you, Chair, members of the Police Commission, for inviting us this afternoon to share the outcomes of our work with you. My name is Asif Rashid, and I'm a Superintendent with the CPS overseeing the Strategic Partnerships Division. In preparing for this presentation today, I felt it appropriate to remind ourselves and our community as to the why the CPS set out evaluating the efficacy and the impact of the School Resource Officer program. As Deputy Chief McClellan said, this work does fall within the remit of the CPS commitments towards becoming an anti-racist organization. Equity, diversity, inclusion, and anti-racism must be at the forefront of every decision and interaction we make, not only with the community, but with our membership as well. This work is a choice we make about who we are, how we will carry ourselves, how we will speak, and how we will engage as a core fabric of our community with the purple people that we serve and protect. It is our deepest conviction that police engaging with youth in non-adversarial environments such as schools builds positive relationships while legitimizing the role of police as community partners with students and faculty alike. That said, we acknowledge that not all students have had positive outcomes with police in school settings, as a deputy said, particularly within the historical context of the residential school system. In a 2021 report for the Standing Committee on Public Safety entitled "Systemic Racism in Policing in Canada", many Indigenous community leaders, including Vice Chief TG, the Regional Chief of the British Columbia Assembly of First Nations, cited the traumatic impact the role of police has had on Indigenous communities and individuals alike. Therefore, it's within this historical context that we set about working with community to reimagine the role of police engaging with youth in schools, and we did so by centering the voices on those from Indigenous, racialized, and marginalized communities. Our program is almost half a century old. We're confident, though, that this evaluation, informed by our community partners, who thankfully are here with us today, will position the Calgary Police School Resource Officer program to remain relevant, responsive, inclusive, and equitable, not only in these contemporary times, but well into the future. Strategist Jason Archibald and Carrie Rack will now lead you through a conversation on our engagement, findings, recommendations, and our next steps. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. My name is Jason Archibald. I think I know some of you or all of you have been here before. I'm a business strategist. This is my colleague Carrie Rack. And we're going to share the presentation today. I'm going to do the first half, and then she will pick up the second half. Great. Perfect. Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. All right, so the School Resource Officer program has been running in Calgary for almost 50 years, since 1976. We're in partnership with four school districts. That includes the Calgary Board of Education, Calgary Catholic School Board, Franco-Sud School Board, and the Palaufer School Division. Staffing includes 26 designated SROs serving 36 senior high schools and 72 junior high schools. We currently don't have any officers assigned to elementary schools at the moment, but they do do lockdowns at elementary schools. We currently have two lockdown teams that conduct two lockdowns per school per year. All right. Thank you. In terms of... Sorry. As you can see from the slide, we currently have 12 vacant constable positions and one vacant sergeant position. This is due to the strain on our frontline resources and the need to prioritize frontline staffing in recent years. The SRO program is authorized to have 38 constables, four sergeants, and one staff sergeant. The program is currently operating under capacity with 26 constables, three sergeants, and one staff sergeant. All right, so this work began in 2020 with the notice of motion that committed CPS to examine our SRO program using anti-racism and an EDI lens to provide more equitable outcomes for all students and to understand and acknowledge previous harm. In 2021, we partnered with Argyle. They conducted an engagement that focused on all school community members. They encountered a number of challenges, though, during COVID, specifically engaging with equity-deserving groups face-to-face. So in 2022 and 2023, we ran a series of re-engagements to focus on equity-deserving groups, including diverse racialized 2SLGBTQIA+ and students with disabilities. As a result of the review, five separate reports have been released. The first report from Argyle was released in 2021. It provided the results of the initial online engagement with students, teachers, support staff, parents, and school resource officers. In 2022 and 2023, we partnered with the City of Calgary Engage Resource Unit. That's CAT sitting right over there. And Action Dignity, so Frances and June sitting right here. They produced four reports from their engagements. They engaged with elementary students, with junior and high school students, oh, sorry, junior and senior high school students, teachers, and a school community roundtable session. The participants that were included in these engagements included students, parents, teachers, support staff, principals, vice principals, and school board representatives. Through this presentation, we'll give an overview of what we have heard from these five sessions. Our final report, which is Report Number Six, was based on the findings from the initial five reports. If you haven't yet, feel free to access these reports on the CPS SRO website at calgarypolice.ca. Also, as the deputy mentioned, the folks from Action Dignity Engager are here to answer any questions about the work that they did. From over two years of engagement, we were able to reach almost 3,000 individuals. While the engagement work was done by external organizations, our internal working group also included members from our Racial Equity Office and the Office of Respect and Inclusion. As the deputy mentioned, the engagement from our community partners was a crucial first step in developing a path forward for the SRO program. We needed to listen to our community before we made any decisions. Sorry. Now that we have our engagement data, we can move forward with the reimagination of the SRO program. Sorry. The scope of today's presentation is to share outcomes and recommendations, not to go into detail about the implementation. While that work has started, and we have some updates for you, the focus is on how we got here. Thank you. All right, let's turn to the key findings from our reports, from our engagement and our reports. So overall, we've had very positive support for the program. People want us in schools, and in fact, they want us more. However, it needs to be acknowledged that there are some students, especially Indigenous, diverse, racialized, 2SLGBTQIA+, and students with disabilities, who have had negative experiences or feel uncomfortable with police in schools, especially Indigenous and Black students. While our engagement found that most of the negative perceptions originate from outside the school via social media, regular media, for example, having any students that feel uncomfortable means that we have to figure out how to build trust. The recommendations for reimagining the program are to provide equitable outcomes for all students, but with a focus on these groups. Note that the name of the program, uniforms, cars, et cetera, were not an issue with folks during the engagement. We want to emphasize that this is less about making superficial changes and resting on our laurels, knowing that the majority of students are happy. This work is more about building connection and trust with the students that we know have complicated experiences with the police, whether these are personal experiences, intergenerational trauma, or perceptions from social media.
Okay. So we're going to talk a little bit too about some of the key, the rest of the key findings in our engagement work. One of the main things that we found was that the SRO role, mandate, and outcomes were not really very well-defined or communicated, and so not well-understood by the community or even with us internally at CPS. As you can see, that's one of the first recommendations, to develop and document that program mandate, expected outcomes, and the SRO roles and responsibilities. And really, everything else is going to flow from that foundational work. For example, we know through this work that we need to improve our training for our SROs. But until we develop that role, mandate, and outcomes, we can't clearly define what those competencies are that we want those officers to have that we can then train for. Another interesting finding was the work in elementary schools. So currently in elementary schools, most students only engage with police during lockdown drills. So when we asked the little kids and we said, "What do you, you know, what do you think about police officers?" They generally had pretty positive things to say. They had nice things. They drew little pictures. They talked about donuts. Sorry. But then when we said, "What do you feel? How do you feel when you see a police officer in your school?" The language turned more to, "I feel a bit anxious. I feel a bit worried. I think something might be happening that's bad." So there's a bit of a disconnect there with the work that we're doing in schools, the communication with our little kids and their parents around the lockdown drills, and we're not serving them super well to go on for success in junior high. Interestingly too, that feeling about police kind of flips in junior high. Interestingly too, that feeling about police kind of flips in junior high, where now the the way they feel about police has changed a little bit from their exposure to media and social media. So they have a little bit more of a negative feeling. But on the other hand, when they have had those interactions with police in their school, they have a lot of positive things to say. So the folks who've had those face-to-face interactions are doing really well. Another thing we found, a key finding, was that officers require more time and capacity to build the positive relationships with students. Our program is not adequately resourced currently. Sorry, I mixed up my pages. Another couple of things that we found, communication. We need to improve our communication with our parents, our students, and our SROs. There's a lot of things that we're doing really well right now, but we're not telling people about it. So there, there's the communication piece, I think, around the changes that we're going to be making going forward, but also talking about some of the good work that's happening. We need to improve our data collection, our evaluation, and our reporting to understand whether the program is meeting our desired outcomes once we define them. And we want to leverage our external resources that are available to us a little bit more. We found that we're not making super great use of our community partners, our teachers, and even our own internal expertise that's available to us. So we want to work more closely with schools and community. So 46 recommendations came out of this work. They were identified, and we put them into these different themes around resourcing, training, hiring, and job requirements, the role of the SRO, how do we collaborate better with community, continuous improvement going forward. And really, throughout the recommendations, there is a theme of communication. Although we do have specific recommendations around communication, like I said, we need to do better communicating everything we do. So we do have a little bit to share on where the work is going from this point forward. There has been a project team that has been assigned to examine the recommendations, prioritize them, and start beginning the implementation work. So you can see this fancy roadmap that's on the PowerPoint. You probably can't see all the little codes, but those are all recommendations and how they're being prioritized. You'll see that some have been started, and there are many that will be scheduled to be completed by the next school year. And then there are some that are a little bit more long-term. And we note that also this roadmap is a bit of a draft right now. It's still subject to some adjustments, depending on things like budget, resourcing, and staffing. So we'll talk about a few of those recommendations that have already started and are in progress. So as mentioned, we've got a working group assigned. They are already working on identifying that vision, mandate, the rules, and the outcomes that we're looking for. One of the recommendations was around the service-providing anti-racism training, and that is already rolled out service-wide. In fact, Jason and I attended our training last week. It was great. And acknowledging those past and current harms. So a little bit of work on that. And that's going to be rolled into the communication plan that has started already. Prioritizing the resource shortage. So I know the folks in this room are working on that at the moment. And examining the SRO position profile using an anti-racist and EDI lens. Up next, we're going to be looking at developing an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the school boards, which was not in place. So that's really about making sure that we have standardized expectations with all of the school boards that are the same for every single school board. They know what we're going to provide, what our roles are, and we know what they'll provide. We're going to examine our information sharing practices with the school boards. We're going to be developing an advisory board as well, made up of members of the community. Right now, they're working on the Terms of Reference for that group and looking to have a standing representative from the CPS Youth Advisory Board as well on that group. That individual will change every year, but we want to ensure that we have their voice always at the table. Clarifying and documenting those roles and responsibilities and finding finding what those internal efficiencies are. So easy things that we can do, like partnering with other SROs and better crossover when there's new hires, so that that training is in place. In the medium and the longer term, there's that bit around resourcing, around developing what a staffing plan and budget looks like for the SRO program. We've acknowledged that it's under-resourced currently, but what does that actual staffing plan look like? We're not quite sure yet. We need to work with our analysts, look at staffing, look at workload, and see actually what that proper number is to be coming back to you down the road and asking for. Reviewing and enhancing training is a big piece that we want to work on. Working with our Learning and Development Unit, we've noted through our work with our community partners that the training should include enhanced anti-racism that is youth-focused, EDI, early childhood core concepts, working with youth, mental health and trauma-informed care, including specific training on racial trauma and trauma-specific to refugees. Focusing on Black and Indigenous youth, using our experts, our existing SROs, and our school boards to look at shared training opportunities. And things like social media training. We want them to communicate with folks in the community, but we don't really give them any training on how to do that. We want to work a little bit better, like I said earlier, with our community partners. So how can we leverage the partners that we have, folks like Action Dignity? The Canadian Mental Health Association, for example, has reached out to us recently, on collaborating to both train our officers, but also provide some of that programming to students. Looking at collaborative models, such as wellness center models that exist in high schools that could include other professionals that are experts in their fields, like social workers or psychologists. And working with organizations that might focus on newcomers and understanding, better understanding the role of police in schools. Developing an evaluation plan is one of these medium-term goals. Like I said, to make sure that we're meeting those targets and that our program is running the way it should. And exploring improvements for those lockdown drills and elementary school engagements. How do we engage better with our little kids and make it fun for them where it should be and giving them the information that they need at the same time? We also wanted to talk a little bit about ongoing initiatives, because some of these, some of these things are going to be, you know, one-off fixes that we can do in the short term. But a lot of this work is going to be ongoing. And they're going to require that continuous improvement as we go. Part of that is acknowledging that and addressing those historical harms. Those who support CPS want to see police as role models. How do we address those issues and show those meaningful outcomes? Addressing those historical harms isn't a checkbox. It's a journey, and it's an active process. We need to commit to improvement based on research, best practice, lived experience, sorry, and by being trauma-informed, equity-seeking, and anti-racist. We want to ensure the program demonstrates goodness, that CPS officers placed in schools can be those role models, communicate tangible actions, and build trust. Another thing we want to do is align with our anti-racism strategies across the board. CPS has one, the City of Calgary and Calgary Schools. I think there's a good opportunity here. Kat and I were talking earlier. There's a great opportunity for our police and our schools to look at things the same way, to be on the same page when it comes to anti-racism. If one partner is aiming for certain anti-racism goals and the other one isn't, it's not going to be as successful as if we align our goals together and work forward together. The advisory board is another thing that will be ongoing, providing that ongoing guidance. Improving our data collection is something that we need to do. Looking at data sharing, perhaps, with our school boards. And having an annual evaluation. We don't want this to be a re-imagining that's done once and left for 20 years on a shelf. We want to define outcomes and evaluate to ensure that we're achieving them. To evaluate, we'll have to define metrics and measure success and ensure that we have the data and the systems and processes in place to support this work. So next steps, we are going to publish the reports, as Jason mentioned, on the website, closing the loop as well with some of the participants that these folks connected with early on. Our implementation team is working with Action Dignity, with folks like CMHA, and doing some work with CMHA in resiliency building and mental health education. We're committed to sharing the updates with you folks in March and September each year and advising on the progress. And that's where we're at. Any questions? And please take advantage of our partners that are in the room if you have any questions, especially about the process or the methodology that we used. Thanks very much, Carrie and Jason, and Chair, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you for that fulsome presentation. I'll now turn it over to commissioners to proceed with their questions. We'll go with Commissioner Campbell and then Commissioner Ogilvy.
Thanks very much, Chair, and thank you for the presentation and the report. It was an excellent presentation and an excellent report. And you know, I read it twice. It took a long time to get here, 47 years. But this is the first time that I've actually heard the purpose of the previous SRO program clearly articulated as it was delivered. And it's really only four things. It's about, it was about building relationships with students, teaching students about crime and safety, conducting school lockdowns, and helping students to view CPS as a trusted resource. So there was some law enforcement, some education, and some marketing. In terms of the last item around helping students to view CPS as a trusted resource, I'm not sure that we actually achieved that goal, because on page 62, there's a question about what do you want your school police officer to teach you? And one racialized student in the participation responded to trust them. So clearly, we actually haven't met that objective. There was a child who was asked by an officer in bicycle safety how he was going to, how he was going to wear a bike helmet with that thing on his head. That thing was his turban. Please ensure that we don't gloss over the healing of past and current harms that emanated from the SRO program as you move forward to police engaging youth in schools. In the same report that Superintendent Rashid quoted, in the carrier language, there is a word the Indigenous people use for the RCMP to this day, and it means "those that took us away". We didn't do residential schools through CPS, but we have that legacy to also heal. It's important that we recognize that this was just a continuation of those harms. So my actual question is, what will be the composition of the advisory board? And how do you see that functioning to design the program, create that mandate, create the measured outcomes, and determine what happens going forward?
We sure can. Yes. We might ask if they're available. We have the implementation team online, Kylie Fitzpatrick and Dammy Dare, if they are there, because they are the ones who have been working on putting this group together. My understanding is that we don't know exactly just yet, that they have been working on all of those pieces that underpin the group first. What does the Terms of Reference look like? How is the reporting going to work? How often are they going to meet? Giving, giving people something to sign up for, basically. But I don't know that they have the composition sorted out just yet. Kylie and Dammy, are you online and able to?
Just takes a minute for us to get them lined up online.
Sorry. Are we throwing you, throwing you something new?
We can sing a little and dance.
Commissioner, I can tell you that it will be a combination of internal and external resources, particularly from the schools, the parents, the community. We're looking at our Youth Advisory Board. So not sure of the actual numbers, but that's kind of what we had in mind as to who all would be at that table to ensure we're as inclusive as possible. It's not just going to be the CPS, not just going to be our partners that helped us with this engagement. It's going to be community-led.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief McColl.
We talked about also ensuring that our advisory board had tangible outcomes, that they're not just there to listen and again be a checkbox, right? That every time that they meet, they have, yeah, outcomes to discuss and contribute in a positive way. So.
So it looks like we have the other group available. If we can turn it over to them. I don't know if you need to repeat the question or if you heard it.
So I think I see Inspector Cant there. So it was about the composition of the advisory board and how you envision putting that together to support designing the mandate and the operational structure of the program, as well as the measured outcomes.
So when it comes to the composition of the advisory board, we're hoping that once we have the Terms of Reference and we understand what the time commitment will be, that we can start inviting people. And the people that we hope to include are people that have been involved in the review process and people that are invested in the School Resource Officer Program. So parents, people in the education community, teachers, and people that are invested in the improvements that we're working on. So I can't say specifically every partner and every person, because we haven't started those invites, but we want to make sure it is an inclusive group and that we have a lot of representation from the people that will give us the feedback we're looking for to make this the, to make the improvements that we're wanting to make.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent Rashid, looks like you're about to add a rider on that.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair. The one piece that I'll add, in conceiving the idea about the advisory boards, we need to understand that most of the youth that were reticent and engaging with us in the first place were from the marginalized, racialized communities. Now, a true advisory board will have a representation of lived experiences on the board. And so we need to be deliberate about ensuring that those voices are represented and can be instructive on the re-imagination of the SRO program. While we understand and are empathetic with those who might be reticent to join our board and provide that kind of direction to the organization, I think it would be my aspiration that we rely on community organizations like Action Dignity and Engage that are the brokers of those voices, those underrepresented voices, to participate in the advisory boards and help us in re-imagining the program.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. And that in part answered part of my question. Go to Commissioner Ogilvy.
Thanks, Chair Cornet. That partially answered one of my questions too. I haven't been here that long, but this is the consecutive meeting where I hear about under-resourced. And it is across the spectrum of what we do, what the police force does. So I'll look at my city colleagues to continue to take that message back to the city. It's always under-resourced, under-strength. So that's a comment. Unlike my colleague Campbell, I didn't read the report twice. I was able to skim it once, and I probably, I may have missed something. So if I did, I apologize. But I see an inverse variation between the SROs and the schools relative to junior versus high. Six to 72 and 16 to 36. Having raised children myself, hearts and minds at 12 to 15 are very, very open to, or closed. And unfortunately, maybe closed at 16 when they go to high school. So I'm just wondering about the path forward as to the resources relative to the populations. And I'll just go to my second question. That 3,000 individuals, the data sample? What's the total, what's the total sample? Like 3,000 out of a possible, how many? Hundred thousand? Thank you.
I can speak a little bit to the numbers. So, so sorry, you're looking for 3,000 out of what? Sorry?
Well, what could be the potential of all the kids in schools? Like, how many? Like, what's the total school population of Calgary?
Hi there. Thanks for the question. My name is Katrina White. I'm the Engag-
Hi, Katrina.
Hi there. Thanks for the question. My name is Katrina White. I'm the engaged planner that's been working with this team. I think it's really important with engagement that we recognize that it's not meant to be statistically representative of the whole. So engagement is about collecting ideas. If we wanted to get a representative sample, we would be going through a very method, very strict methodology through research. So with engagement, the value of that is getting very, very nuanced sentiments from very targeted groups of folks. Research tends to get a little bit more challenging when we're looking at very targeted demographics, like we were doing within this project here. And so the value of the engagement, we still heard these voices. They are valid. They came from students and their opinions and experiences are truthful and need to be valued in what they are. Does that help to answer your question?
Yeah, it helps. How about my other question about the, about the, the inverse variation between junior and senior high?
SRO ratio for high school to?
Yes, like, and maybe that's part of the, the future work. But it seems to me, and I'll say it again, that between 12 to 15 years old, people are, their minds are malleable, to say the least.
Commissioner, that's a great observation. And I will say that our deployment model for SROs has been agile and responsive in working with our school boards. That is to say, it's been imperfect. And so those numbers that were represented earlier were a moment in time count where the SROs were deployed. We've been working with our school boards to move the SROs around based on needs, based on new schools coming up, events happening in the community, contemporary issues, geopolitical issues that might influence additional resourcing at the schools and the like. And so, as I said, that, that those numbers are a little bit misleading and that we've moved some positions around since the presentation was created. And I'm happy to also report that with the support of the executive leadership team in December, we're able to add five additional SROs to the, the complement that we have. So again, resourcing is, is tricky. As was alluded to earlier, we don't have SROs dedicated to the elementary school program. But oftentimes, we will assign based on fit and need of the school, SROs from junior and senior highs to go and backfill emergent needs at those schools as well.
I make the comment because of some of the data, my own interaction with officers on the ride-along I was on. So, and, and don't get me wrong, this is great work. And as Winston Churchill said in 1942, this is the end of the beginning.
Great advice. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Nissen Jordan, and then Commissioner Siddiqui.
Thanks, and thank you very much for the report as well. I've read it a couple of times as it evolved. A couple of questions and a couple of comments. So first of all, I think the resourcing question comes, as we've heard all the time. I would strongly encourage that when you do go back, it may be with time evolution that you can gain efficiencies. And you may not need as much as you need if you can get rid of the stuff that should be done by other individuals. And I'm gonna make the suggestion that in some circumstances, you can get a smaller group of people to deliver. For example, the lockdown training might be, I notice you've already started in that area. But that's the type of thing is look for efficiencies within that. So you don't have to ask for so much resource, because we know that everybody is constantly asking for that. The, the other question I would have is, you mentioned use of some of the youth link and you do have programs there. But I think that there is an opportunity that this should be done on a more, I would say focused way. I think we're under utilizing some of those programs. And we heard about that in various committees. So I think that that has to be looked at. Again, you've got resources over here. You might not need them in one place, but you can get them from another. And finally, I would strongly encourage that there is a big link with the, you know, for example, the education faculties at the university in designing programs, designing interaction with the education system and link up with your Mount Royal Criminal Justice System. I mean, this is all part of resources that are out there that if we don't have to all of a sudden, you know, pay an external consultant to do it. But, you know, a PhD student can work with you and provide some of that in an education format. I think that would be where you gain some of your efficiencies as well. Thanks.
Thanks for those comments. We, we're thinking of all sorts of different ways that the program could make use of some of these great resources. Like I said, we have resources external to us and a lot internal that, that we can make better use of too. Even internally, we have our anti, our anti-racist, our anti-racism office. We have our Indigenous team. We have the Office of Respect and Inclusion working on EDI work. We have our community mobilizers, for example. A lot of these folks could work with our SROs. And there's also those, that idea of teams that could work cross disciplines, right? So maybe bringing in folks that are mental health workers, for example, or psychologists that could deliver some of that kind of programming for which they're experts and our folks aren't. So I think there's lots of good opportunity there. Agreed.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Siddiqui?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for all your work over the last couple of years. The report and a special thank you to all the partners who supported the work that you've done and especially those who are here today and those online. So thank you for that. A couple of my questions were answered already, so that's fantastic. But I do have a couple of more. Can you let me know, who's on the exploratory committee? That you're talking about, the committee that you've put together to start looking at these recommendations?
That's not fully defined yet. So that's, that's what Dammy and Kylie were speaking to earlier. So we're in the process of figuring that out.
Okay, I thought that was the advisory committee. That's not. I'm talking about the internal.
The internal, the internal group? Yeah. Okay, so we have, we've got two business strategists on that, leading that team. So that's Kylie and Dammy. They were sitting in the room. Or you can see them right there, sitting beside Jazz. Jazz is also like our lead subject matter expert from the SRO team. And, and then we've looped in with our Office of Respect and Inclusion and our anti-racism team as well. Have I missed anything? Oh, and the SRO team themselves are involved.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Next question was, I think, Carrie, you had mentioned that there were specific communication recommendations that had come through this work. What are those?
Some of them are as easy as creating a better website. So how do we, how do we make something as easy as a website a little bit more accessible for folks? How can we use a website to help humanize our officers? So how can we tell a little bit more of their story, introduce them to their schools? Things as easy as putting on a schedule. When is your SRO going to be in your school? When are our SROs going to be at specific community events within your school? Things like that. As well, I think that more targeted communication between the service, between the program and as well the, the parents and the schools and the school boards, looking at better ways to do that. And some of that will be on the, using the website, using social media. We do have our folks in strategic communications working on a communication plan for that as well. And what am I missing? That's a good one. Yes, flexibility of scheduling was one that I missed as well. So that was to do with having our folks be available for more of those community events. So looking into how we can adjust or look at their schedules in a way that they can attend more of those events. Because we know that's where they make the best face-to-face interaction with students, fun events.
Thanks. And just one more question. You talked about publishing the reports on the website, which is great. How are you going to communicate that out to let folks know that they're on the website? And how do you share that with even the, the children that you interviewed or the teachers and the others?
I'm gonna turn that over to Kat, because she's got a plan.
Thank you for the question. So for teachers, that will be as simple as emailing them all back. We, we do have their email address for most of them as they had elected to get more information about the roundtable sessions that occurred after the engagement. So we can report back to them to say these reports and recommendations are now out and published for them to view. For the elementary school students, we went through the Open Minds City Hall program for that. So I will connect back in with the teacher and ensure that she forwards that back out to all of her teachers that participated in the school year. Those are the teachers that participated, had their students participate online. So we'll be able to connect back. And I can hand it over to Action Dignity and they can speak to how they will refer back to their students.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm June Narval and I'm with Action Dignity. So pleased to be here and that, glad also that all these conversations around the SRO and how we can reimagine it is almost to its full, full circle. And all the recommendations almost like taking its, it's being rolled out as well. And how we see this being reported back to our student participants. There were like 211 of them. And that we also approached this through some co-hosting with some ethnocultural community partner organizations. And we envisaged that we will be reconnecting back again to the ethnocultural community organizations and their leaders whom we have contacted to mobilize some students for us. And that we will be organizing community conversation circles with them so that we will be able to feed back as well the, the, the report, but also more of what the CPS and the SRO is doing insofar as responding to their concerns. I thought that that would be a great thing to do moving forward.
Thank you for that. And thanks for answering all my questions. I look forward to the twice-a-year updates and seeing how you move this along. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Wong, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And before I start, thank you for welcoming me to the commission and to all the commission members and the service. Thank you for having me here as well. Unfortunately, I just received access to the system yesterday. So therefore, I haven't had a chance to read it twice or three times or one time over. But I do take, you know, the presentation with great heart and great consideration. Because I, I remember the days when I was in school and this is in Vancouver and the student, resource officers were very, you know, prominent in our Vancouver system. The question I do have though, the engagements you had, the people you engaged with, the students, the teachers and that, going beyond that though, were any of the engagements done with, you know, parents? Done with cultural groups, done with, and I will say, some of our students are in shelters and even with the shelter providers. Have we gained their perspectives as to the perception or the realities of understanding of how students have with policing outside of the, you know, that immediate core of that school environment, but that community environment or that home environment?
Yeah, I just wanna, I'd like to just start off by saying that the focus really was on, on school, sorry, students within the school environment. So we didn't really go into, we didn't expand beyond that scope. But that said, like, we did talk with parents who had children in schools. So, so does that make sense? Like, we have not expanded the study sort of beyond that, that school scope.
Thank you for that. I think it's really important, because, you know, the influences that our children get are not just within the school environment. The school environment, they're, they're, you know, six, eight hours a day. But when you take a look at the, the real, if I say, the impactful environment that they get was obviously from their parents, from their siblings and that, as well as the cultural groups, racialized groups as well. Having their perspective, having the understanding is important. Second half of that comment, I will say is, when we communicate back, I think it's important to communicate back to the parents and the cultural groups as well. Because last thing you, you know, I'm gonna say, last thing you want is opposing influences. If you're trying to get one, you know, one, in one measure across to them, you don't, you don't want others to have, again, different sorts of, you know, how to say, upbringings or cultural beliefs or for that matter, traumatic beliefs, countering the statement you're, you know, you're trying to get across there as well. The other comment, I guess, is when we talk about the, the resourcing and staffing and everything else such, you know, take the heart, you know, Commissioner Ogil, that, you know, we can come back to the city and ask for resourcing. But again, it's the commissioner comes to the city and asks, you know, if it's appropriate for more dollars and that, than the resource assignment, of course, is what the service to make that, that determination there. But one of my fellow colleagues and former commission members had forwarded a question to me, which I'm gonna take the opportunity to ask on his behalf. And that is when we, when we take a look at the resourcing, we take a look with the, the, the measures and metrics of, you know, what goes into it in terms of quantities or hours or dollars and the outcomes of that, right? The outputs of that, you know, we often take a look at performance measures and inputs and outputs. But the actual is the outcome. You can achieve different outcomes with different metrics. And I think I heard earlier, different measures or approaches could, could derive to that. So, you know, I'm, I'm not asking for his answer to be provided today. But what I'm suggesting is, as we go forward on this, we take a look at the methods we do and how's, how's it relates to the desired outcomes that we're looking for. Thank you.
Sure. So I can certainly speak to your first question around the experience, external experience of students and how that's sort of shaping their perception. We did see with the elementary students that they're, they had a very positive perception of police in a general, in a general way. So they referred to TVs and movies and we had a good laugh and, you know, they draw on stereotypes. It was that direct experience within the school where the, the, the tone of the conversation changed quite significantly. When we got into the junior high, high schools, what we heard from the folks that Action Dignity had engaged with was that, you know, their, their perception of police is very much influenced by what they're seeing externally in the media and the news. But when they have an opportunity to have a direct experience with an SRO officer, those students were reporting a very positive experience. And so what came across through the teacher engagement and through the student engagement is more consistent, positive time with an officer will be very influential in helping to overcome some of those negative, quite powerful influences that, you know, students are receiving from the community and the external world. You know, they will obviously be getting influenced by parents. But I, I do think that's an opportunity where increased communication to the, to the, to the parents from the school community and from CPS will also help to sort of help understand what that role is of the SRO officer and what they're there to do with their students, with their children in the school environment.
Thank you for bringing forward the, the comment about other, other factors. Because again, if you take a look at junior highs, junior high, for example, junior high is about, if I understand, about 200 to 300 students per, per school. And the number of students in there that actually interact with a SRO, maybe 5% of them perhaps.
Right.
So the remaining 95%ers can influence other ways. And, and again, when you talk about junior highs and senior high, they're not listening to the kids in school. They're listening, as you say, to social media, TV. And we've got to find a way, whether through communication or through SROs, to, you know, desensitize themselves from this type of thing. And listen to, as you say, the actions and activities and the outcomes that, you know, community and activists and our services provide. So thank you for that. That's it. I appreciate it.
I'll just add on very quickly, the, some of the recommendations around communication did include of humanizing that SRO officer and allowing them to connect with older students in the ways that they, they're, they like to be communicated with. Unfortunately for some, that means TikTok or, you know, through Facebook and Instagram. That's where students are going for their information. And to be able to see their SRO officer there in a human sort of capacity will help to go a long way in helping to neutralize some of that other information that they're receiving.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I just would like to add too, with regard to the parents, because there were like about 15 and 25 parents who joined us in the conversation. And that they were at the background, but there were also side conversations. And we understand from the students that some of the experiences and some of the thoughts and reflections that they were having were really passed on from their parents, because their parents too had gone through a lot of challenges, bias and discrimination and were stigmatized as well. And this has been also experienced by their, by their children. So this is something that is passed on from generation to generation. I can only speak of the 211 students that we've interviewed, that we've interacted with. And that there is seemingly like a balance of negative and positive view. But I just would like you to invite to our room where the students are, where about half of them would express the positive opinion about the police. And I really, you know, like appreciate the, the SRO officers who have evoked that positive experiences from the students. But on the other hand, there would be equally half of the sentiments that are negative. And if you really dip dive into who- And if you really dip dive into who these students are, they are the black, they are indigenous, they are also having disabilities or those from the LGBTQQAS+ community. And that I think is very important to, you know, like if, to identify those negative experience, see through the eyes and the lens of those students who have negative experiences. Because in a way, this would be an area of growth for the SRO. And I think that some of the, most of the recommendations are very commendable. And that we would really want to bring this back to the students. But at the same time, as you have said, sir, we would really love also to engage the parents. Because at the end of the day, they are also hurt, they are also discriminated, they are also experiencing all those, you know, challenges in life. And I thought that they would also learn from, from this process. Francis?
My name is Francis from Action Dignity and I just wanted to add to what June has said. I think it is very, very important for us to kind of have these views because that will kind of propel the way for how actions are taken. For instance, we have this concept of targeted universalism where we look at the consistencies that we saw in the report with respect to certain population groups, black indigenous groups. It was very consistent with respect to their experiences. And so that means that there is a parting here that will need to be addressed. And that will have to be consistent with the approach around targeted universalism. And really dig deeper into what expressions came out from these young people. What were they talking about when they talk about fear and anxiety? What does that mean? And how does that translate to, into actions that SROs can begin to engage with? Because they were very, very, they commented the work of SROs for sure. They were very, very interested in the fact that they were there to support them as mentors and which was great. But we also have to pay attention to some of the areas where they require some support or some improvements when it comes to how we put together an action or action plans that will support their wellbeing in the school. So like June has said, it has to be really, really emphasized in that respect. So that in terms of actions, we are very particularly interested in how those actions will be targeted at people or young people who have experiences that are not consistent with their fellow students in the school system.
Thank you very much for that conversation. It was very good. Appreciate that. Chief Newfelt, you would like to make a comment and then I have another couple commissioners.
Oh, sorry, I was, I was kinda heading for the end, just kind of a high level comment. I think it's really important what's been said by Commissioner Campbell and others and really just Francis reiterated, reiterated again. This was about actually trying to improve the program by focusing on the portion of the student population that isn't best served by the program. So there's, there's, there's broad support, but there's people that aren't experiencing it in the same way. And so, but I did wanna just balance out the comment there, because I think we can't forget those comments that have been said. But we have done, and this is broader for me than just the SRO program, because we have done a very special thing here in Calgary. With, and we can't overlook the connections between the SRO program, the Calgary Police Youth Foundation and the programs that are there. I think Deputy McClellan had mentioned the SROs are the number one referral source for those programs, as well as Youth Link. And all of those things go together in a way that actually produces some really good things. And I think sometimes we lose sight of that. We talk about the individual comments that we hear from students in the schools. But I can tell you that when I look at our cadet program as an example, I believe it is the healthiest, the largest and healthiest operating cadet program in Western Canada. And, and the vast majority of the kids involved in the program are actually from racialized communities. And a lot of those kids are angling or heading forward to become police officers in the future. And even the ones that aren't will have a very, very healthy attitude about policing. The programs that we have also, like when we talk about deployment for just a second, ISSP is an example, is another program that there's no way that we could target it across the whole population. So we came up with a matrix, a risk-based matrix that actually gets you to how you decide where you put that very intensive intervention. And I, and I think as we look at the deployment model in the future for SROs, the reason why we feel like we don't have enough is because everybody wants them. The reality of it is, you know, with resources being limited, everybody won't be able to have them. So how do we figure out where would we put, you know, if we had 20 bucks, where would we invest that for the best outcomes type thing? And I think fundamentally for me, the thing that came out of this is when the program started back in 1976, I don't know if it had been other places or whatever, but it was basically implemented for 1976 and it needed to evolve. And the pieces, the data, the evaluation and the, and the strategic pieces in there with, that would allow it to do that, didn't really, didn't really mature with it. So I think that's where there's a really big opportunity this time. And so I like where we're, where we're going and I really appreciate the work of the team and the support by Action Dignity. But I think in North America, we still have a lot of people coming here saying like, what are you guys doing? And I have not been in a recruit class. We welcome, as a group, we welcome every new recruit class. And I have not been in a recruit class probably for the last five or six, where there has not been somebody who talked about their SRO or had, had connections with cadets or Youth Link or whatever. And that was ultimately their initial connection to the Calgary Police Service. So we do have something really good going and I think we just have to keep it all working together as we think about the recommendations and how all of it fits together and works together as we go forward. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Commissioner Mallon and then I have, go to myself after that and then we'll see if we do another round.
I'll be very quick. I, I wanted to commend you for the comments that you made about all the training that you are going to ensure that those assigned to SRO positions get. And I hope that the whole recruitment process, it's not everybody who can do this work. And just a couple of specific comments from, I kinda watch social indicators and education in particular. And the, the concept of neurodiversity and anxiety levels right now are somewhat skyrocketing, skyrocketing. And just when you're thinking of training to maybe consider some, and that's regardless of being part of a minority group or not, like it's across the whole population, anxiety and an increasing percentage of people who are identifying as neurodiverse. And that means they see things differently and perhaps process things differently. So I would just encourage you to consider those in your training as well. Thank you.
It's interesting you say that. Another project that I'm working on is our community mobile crisis response work that we're doing with the Alex. And those folks who are doing that crisis response work took some training in neurodiversity. And to a person, they said it was the most interesting and useful training that they had to respond to crisis, so.
And just further, one of the actions of the implementation team is to mandate that all new SROs coming into the program receive the Alberta Wellness Initiative Brain Story certification. So that's something that we've implemented in the last couple of months as well.
Thank you. And I just, on, on another note, I appreciate all of these, the comments and, and the, the importance and the value of the SRO program. Also take to heart the fact that so many people, whether it be teachers, community members, parents, other students, want more SROs. I totally understand that, but I'll go back to the earlier point, Counselor Wong and Shereen Ison-Jordan, that there are finite resources and it's going to take some creativity and sort of getting out of the box, I think, to really think about what things the SROs do that they can hand off to someone else or how they can partner with other people to get farther and interact with more people. Whether it be Youth Link, whether it be other organizations in the city, some of the programs that the chief mentioned, absolutely. But there are, there are lots of other organizations in the city who work with youth and youth that are at risk. So how do you do those things and sort of leverage that as much as you can? Because I think there's, it's, yes, I mean, if we could put one dedicated SRO in every single school in the city, you know, we'd be talking hundreds. And so we're not going there, unfortunately, that's not gonna happen. So how do we take what's good out of that? So that, that's one question which we can't answer right now. The other, the other comment I just wanted to make was that one of the real challenges, and this is linked to it, is going to be to come up with the outcomes that we're desiring from the goals and the objectives and the vision. And how do we measure those? How do we properly evaluate those? Because they're much like all of the policing, they're, they're the prevention part. There are all of those things that are very difficult to mention, measure. And yet we're going to have to do that somehow to be able to make decisions about where we put the finite set of resources we have. So without some kind of data that's valid, that you can link, that's consistent over time, and it can't be done right away, you won't have the data that will allow you to make the choices of, do we need that person here? Do we need them on transit? Do we need them somewhere else in order to make the biggest impact on the overall safety of the city? So it's, it's just a really hard place and commission's sort of dead center of that discussion. But I think that's one of the challenges that the SRO programs can have over the next six months is to come up with not only the goals and the objectives and the communication, the rest, but what are the specific measures and how are you gonna track those over the time? So I'll leave it at that, because I know you don't have the answers yet and ask if there are other commissioners who have further questions. I see, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Edidron first and then Commissioner Campbell. Please, go ahead.
So good.
My apologies.
Thank you, Chair. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here at the first commission meeting. And just, it seems like there's a competition amongst our commissioners about how many times we read the report. So I read it five times. So, so that's just what we wanted to get that clear. But I just have only two, two questions. Commissioner Siddique spoke a little about communication in general. And, and you shared a great deal of information, a great report about how you've received information and then how you're sort of consolidating it going forward. The question I actually have for CPS is, is there plans, and again, maybe at early stages, to communicate one solid message? Or is it phased out messages or tailored messaging that supports what SROs are about? So I sat down here and I talked quickly, so is it, we are a safe point of contact? Is it, we are good listeners? Is it, we help everybody? So just curious along those lines, whether or not there's that thought about that one messaging, several messaging, a broader messaging that, that branches off or affects the various levels of education that we currently experience in.
That's a good question. And the communication plan, I don't think has been completely developed yet and certainly not by me. So I'm, I'm gonna take a bit of a stab at it and I'll invite Mike Nun down there. I don't know if Marie is in the room with you guys. Is she jazz? No, no, Marie. Marie is our, it's one thing we should have mentioned when we talked about the makeup of the implementation folks, is that they will have a direct communication person assigned to them. I'm gonna guess that it's more tailored when you talked about the different, I, I would think that we would have an overall message, but that we would tailor it depending on what we're trying to get across. So I think there's going to be some internal messaging that's gonna have to happen with our patrol, for example, on how best to interact and how to work together. And I would think that there'll be some other messaging to the school boards and the schools themselves, as well as to the students, which will be a little bit different, like Kat was saying, a lot of students wanna see quicker, quicker messaging, things like TikTok, whatever that might be. How do we humanize those SROs and make them more relatable to those students? So I, I'm gonna guess, and Mike, feel free to, uh, challenge me on it, but I'm gonna guess that tailored and longer term is the way to look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, and thank you for that. Marie, who is working on the communication strategy, she's just sent me a message saying that we're always looking at different ways to communicate different messages to different audiences. And that's no different in this particular case. So we do have a broader communication strategy that is already rolling out. So for example, there's already a tweet that's gone out as a result of this meeting. Now the report is being made public, that points people to the website that holds the report. So just one of many different things that we'll be looking at doing to make sure that this is communicated appropriately. It's such an important project. It wasn't lost on me that on the key findings or the key recommendation slide, communications was the biggest box there. And that tends to be the case with projects as complex as this. So we will have a robust communication strategy.
Appreciate it. Thanks very much. And Mike, my second question really is builds upon that in the sense that CPS obviously are committed to this process and are, it's obviously complex. And there are, there are obviously several needs to be met. And so then my challenger, as I'm thinking it through, is how does CPS balance the need to be approachable, integrated, supportive, understanding all the issues within our schools, coupled with the idea of also being preventative, early intervention, and even an intelligence gathering resource? Because I could see some way along the lines that those two might diverse or start to compete against each other or you might have to breach trust in order to share information to save somebody. So how, how does you kind of wrestle with that as an issue and how is that balance gonna go forward?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Hope. That is a delicate balance and finding that ideal unicorn within the midst of the CPS to fill those disparate functions can be challenging. I think it really comes down to the recruitment and selection that Carrie and Jason talked about, was one of the short-term outcomes. And it's about organizational fit. One of the things that we've started doing or have considered is even the role of having the school boards participate on the selection, recruitment, selection for officers joining the SRO program. And that's something that we'll revisit with them. I think it's important to ensure that not only does the SRO fit with the aspirational state and the outcomes, but also fit for the particular school community that they're serving. And so we know, for example, and we've heard this, is that office, schools where there are a disproportionately large number of racialized students would like to see officers that look like themselves and speak the same language. And so that will all be part of that consideration as well, yet to be determined though. Thank you.
No, appreciate it. Thanks for the answer and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks very much, Chair. Super quick. This is a, how are you planning to share this work with other policing jurisdictions? This is an issue around SROs and I think in B C they're called SLOs. This is an issue that many communities across Canada are grappling with right now. And Calgary's taking a different approach than what we've seen nationally. And I think it's an interesting one. And I, so just wanted to understand if there's a, if there's a plan or an approach to doing that. And I think, appreciate your comments, Chief, with respect to the other programs that are there. The only one that I would add into that, of course, is redirect, where we're really increasingly having to look at young people being radicalized, particularly into extremism and hate and, and areas of that, of, of that nature. So is that enough time for you to?
Okay. With regards to the first question, Commissioner, there isn't a plan, regrettably. I apologize for that. But two options that have presented themselves here in the last few weeks is through the Canadian Safety Knowledge Alliance. Inspector Martin and I were at a symposium last week in Toronto. And a number of police organizations from across the country remarked about the way that we've gone about our SRO reimagination work. And so we're working with executives at CSK to consider how we might share it more globally. And then even with the Equity Diversity and Inclusive Subcommittee of the Alberta Association of Chiefs of Police, I was fortunate to have a conversation with a couple of members at a conference earlier today, where they too inquired about the work that we're doing. So that might be another forum by which to share the information. Again, to be determined.
Brilliant. Thank you very much. Oh, Sir, go ahead.
I just wanted to add as well, through our office strategic planning and evaluation, we also are in contact a lot with other folks from other policing organizations when we're doing research, when we're starting new programs. So we have a lot of these folks out there as well, who we're kind of constantly in contact with as far as what, you know, what project are you working on these days? So there is a lot of that sort of informal communication going on, especially when other, other agencies start programs or they're looking at programs. Now that our report is published, I expect that we'll have some folks contacting us and asking questions. So a lot of that happens informally too with research.
Excellent. Well, I would suspect that when you start speaking with those colleagues, particularly once you figure out what the new purpose will be and you start determining how you will measure your achievements and the data that you will track. And I'm, perhaps it's because I'm looking directly at Ms. Ms. Hamilton-Henry and know that that's, it's, it's, it's going to factor into the, the work that we do with the annual policing plan and the, and the various KPIs that we present. I was, I suspect that they will be as interested because they will be potentially in a similar situation many years down the road. We tend to be a bit of a, a bit, a bit ahead of the game here. But I think the end of the day, know that for Calgarians, three years ago, when they lined up for three days in July at city council, this was something they talked about and they needed to, and they needed to have addressed. And we've done that. So thank you to everyone who put even an ounce of time into this review, the reporting, the two reports, the presentation, and then the reimagining. That'll happen over almost two years. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Oh, Councilor Wines.
Sorry, I might have read over this, but what languages were you communicating with the people we were interacting with? And what languages will we be publishing this report in?
With action dignity, the way we normally would disseminate information would be co-hosted by the different ethocultural communities. So that means it will be in their first language, too. But in terms of the printout and translation, it would always be guided by the top eight, top 10 languages that are being spoken. And so these are also like translated and that they are also distributed and also posted in our website. This is how we normally would do with the action dignity. And I think that would be the approach that we will be doing insofar as disseminating widely the information, the results of our other research, but at the same time, the recommendations and some of the activities moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who's presented and worked on this. And I would say also thank you to the service, much like Commissioner Campbell said, for the last two and a half years. It has been a lot of work. I know that we have, as commission, pushed back several times, gently and not so gently, but I think that this really will take the whole service, the city forward. And I think the implications for a lot of the other work that you do all with the EDI and all the rest of the work that is is being done here will be, will have implications, reverberations around the whole service and the city as well. When you hear the different communities starting to talk about, yes, we listened, yes, we're looking into this, and yes, we're working on reimagining. So I just want to say thank you. And I do think it's it's excellent work, more to come, of course, but good, good work done so far. So thank you so much. And with that, I'll say thank you to the, that group. And we can move on to the next agenda item, which is another significant item on our agenda. The next one is the high system users on transit, which is another key issue for our city. Transit safety and what the service is seeing with people who are prolific users of the public services and what the plans are and the strategies going ahead. So with that, I'll turn it over to whoever's going to do the next one. Deputy Chief Gill, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today I have the pleasure of introducing you to two superbly talented and dedicated members of our CPS team. On the right is Tamara Daku, who is our manager of our Community Policing Analytical Unit. Tamara's leadership, expertise, creativity, dedication, abilities allow our bureau leaders and members to make intelligence-led decisions in terms of crime and disorder in our city. Amanda Yuhas is a crime and intelligence analyst based in District Two. And if you'll give me a moment, just last week, Amanda was officially recognized by the Alberta Women in Policing as a 2023 Civilian Employee of the Year. She was recognized for her incredible work in delivering, she, sorry, incredible work she delivered in relation to mobile applications, dashboards, and automated reporting, all in relation to safe spaces, public safety initiatives. Her great work allowed our member, allows our members to quickly access the information they need on their mobile devices while encountering individuals so they can make better in the moment decisions about those individuals causing harm or disorder in our communities and what community supports they may need to access. Today, Amanda and Tamara will provide you with a short presentation on the Transit Harm Offender Database that they have created. Over to you, Tamara.
Thank you, sir. That's going to be a tough one to follow up. As mentioned, I'm Tamara Daku. We're going to talk to you a little bit today about our Safe Public Spaces Action Plan. And their LRT dashboard and mobile application falls within that plan. So what is the Safe Public Spaces Action Plan? I recognize there's some new commission members here tonight who may or may not be familiar with that. It's an action plan that we launched back in the spring of 2023 this year, just in response to the feelings and perception and the lived experiences of both our public and folks that were on our LRT transportation system, but also in our public spaces and parks and in our downtown core. So it covers a number of things. We're going to talk to you specifically tonight about transit and some of the harm offenders, but also some of the high system users that we've been studying. What I would like to do is just take us back a little bit to talk about where we've been. So what you're going to see. Is the PowerPoint? I think you got it. Okay. I think I can just go to slide three. Perfect. What you now see is is a graph. So we're going to take you back a little bit to 2019. So the pre-COVID time, as you note, their crime occurrences on the LRT were substantially higher. And then we had a bit of a lull when COVID hit. So 2020 was a unique year for all of us. You saw a drastic decrease in the calls for service and the crime occurrences that were occurring on the LRT. However, during that timeframe, with unique situations in the city, we did have some challenges with some of our vulnerable folks who were were looking for sheltering in some of the transit stations. We were looking for warming spaces. We were accessing a number of different locations throughout the city to shelter folks during COVID with all the separation guidelines and and legislation that we had before us. And so as a result of that, we had a new group of folks that were using the LRT system, which was less of our public business community that was coming downtown. So we had a substantial increase in officer-related calls for service on the LRT lines. So you do see some calls there on this chart. So that kind of talks about a little bit about what happened in 2020. And then as we moved into 2021, we started to see an increase, particularly in the latter part of the year, when most of our public started to return to the workspace throughout the whole entire city, not just in the downtown core. And so this was a reemergence. And at the same time, what we saw is a substantial increase in in calls for service in relation to LRT. Most of those were disturbance calls, check on welfare calls, medical collapse calls. And we were dealing with some complex issues with some of our our vulnerable folks throughout the city who were dealing with mental health, addictions, and sheltering situations all at the same time. Early 2022, we launched a multi-agency initiative. Actually, I'll take that back. The first time, we just launched it with our transit peace officer partners. And that did have a little bit of an effect. As you notice, that crime goes down when you have presence on LRT lines. But the minute that we stood down our initiative and put our officers back out in the street and reallocated our resources, the same problem emerged. So we had a lot of high, high disorder type of activity that was happening in our transit stations. So a couple of months later, we partnered again, but this time with Community Standards, Bylaw, our community support partners, and with transit. We had substantial success. We drove the crime numbers down. But we also were starting to deal with some complex issues and wraparound supports with some of our vulnerable. And once again, when we collapsed those resources, the same issue reemerged. So the challenge that we have is is trying to figure out what is the actual root cause of this? And then addressing the lived experiences of our public who are using the transportation system, but also leading with some compassion and supports and trying to address some of the underlying causes for our vulnerable folks that were also spending some time in our LRT stations. So that gives you kind of a sense of where we were. What did we learn as a result of these operations? We learned, obviously, that if we apply resources and presence, we will have a short term impact, but it doesn't have the long term effect that we were looking for. We also learned that we didn't have enough data available to us to deploy where we really needed to. We were in the habit of reporting sort of in a quarterly fashion on our LRT and transportation systems, which doesn't give us the immediate data that we needed to understand where we should be deploying to tackle these issues. We also were lacking a lot of the information. We had our calls for service and we also had our stuff in our records management system. But there is a number of contacts we make with individuals throughout the course of our police operations that were not necessarily accessible to our officers in real time while they were responding to calls for service with their transit peace officer partners. We understood we needed to know a little bit more about the high system users and the vulnerable folks that we were encountering in these calls for service on the transit stations. And we really wanted to understand how many of these individuals were causing harm, which is more of our bailwreck, where we have harm, harm-related offenses, where true public safety is something that we need to tackle immediately with enforcement support. And then how many of those folks were more complex clients of service who required additional supports and wraparound services where enforcement isn't necessarily the the right answer? So we wanted to look for the right response to the right problem at the right time. So this is where I'm going to segue a little bit to my analyst here who partnered with some of our talented data scientists in our info delivery team. We identified a number of data gaps as a result of multiple projects and initiatives. We ran 12 community crime reduction priorities throughout the city at the same time as six major operations in relation to the LRT lines. And so there was a number of roadblocks that our officers and our partners ran into with lack of access to certain type of data to make better decisions about the people they're interacting with and making decisions on what kind of action they should take. So I brought that problem to this team and she's going to walk you through what was developed.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. So what I'm presenting here is a screenshot of two pieces of technology that I developed on my work in this project. So the first is the LRT dashboard. And what this dashboard does is it serves up daily information about all of our interactions on the LRT stations. So we set out certain key performance indicators and outputs that we wanted to track, how many interactions we were having, how many calls for service we were responding, and then dive a little bit deeper into where those calls were coming from and getting a little bit closer to that root cause of why we were having those interactions with particular subjects. So this dashboard allows for real time. It's going to refresh tomorrow at 10 a.m. and give me information right up until that time. I can look at specific districts, areas. I can delve into whether the calls were generated by the public or generated by our officers or even by our pay duties as part of a specific initiative that we're undertaking. And then more importantly, I can identify which of those interactions or calls for service are related to personal harm offenses. And what we can see is that in 2023, we've had 8,500 total interactions on LRT, whether they're calls for service or just initiated contacts with subjects. And of those, less than 5% are harm-related. But we still have a huge number of subjects that we're contact, in contact with regularly as police on LRT. So it comes to a total of 3,400 to date and counting unique subjects that we're having interactions with. And what we found through looking at this dashboard and delving into different aspects is that we have a small number of individuals that are having a significant number of contacts. And and while unsurprising, the data really does back up that we have a small group of people that need supports, that are not necessarily committing harm offenses or criminal nature, but we're having those contacts nonetheless. So from that, on the right side of the screen, I developed the Officer Toolkit. This was rolled out in September, an early version of it in June, but the the true version in September service-wide. What this does is provides that information back to the officer real time and in a way that's that's specifically meant to assist them when they're dealing with these people who are having multiple interactions. So very quickly, they're able to see how often we've interacted with them recently, what those interactions were, and move them through a bit of a laddered approach. So identifying those individuals who are committing personal harm offenses and moving them through the system as appropriate as addressing the behavior that we're not accepting on LRT, but then also identifying those subjects that are being in contact with regularly over and over and over again on our LRT systems. I'll hand it back over to Tamara.
So this is a bit of a game changer for us. We were finally placed in a unique situation where we could have an understanding of the individuals that we were responding to in real time at our LRT stations and in close proximity to the stations. We recognized in the previous initiatives of what we were doing is every time you applied physical presence or resourcing to one location, what we were doing is displacing the problem to another location. So we're not solving the problem, we're moving the problem. So we can continue applying presence and we will have a short term impact. What we're looking for is that long term impact and how do we actually deal with the underlying cause? So I'm going to segue back into that Safe Public Spaces Action Team. We have a joint management team, which is comprised of our enforcement agencies, so includes our transit peace officer partners, our bylaw, community standards. We have a number of partners from the City of Calgary who are representing departments across the entire city, as well as our support partners and social serving agencies, who are all connected to this joint management team. You can see there's three pillars there. We have access to obviously enforcement resources, which we're, we're well placed to deal with. But what we really need to tap into is that outreach and that advocacy piece as well. Because if there's only 5% of those 3,000 individuals actually committing harm-related offenses, which falls into that criminal conviction kind of category, we need some help. This is not something that we can enforce our way out of. It is something that we need to apply with multiple partners as a wraparound approach. So for those of you that were at the CPC Summit, you may have seen this next part before. So I apologize for that. For some of you, this may be new. We're going to take you through a typical case study of one of the high system users. We don't like to refer to these folks as offenders because our typical offender is somebody who's involved in criminal behavior or are causing harm to folks. And what we have here is high system users who are accessing our transportation line, which and tapping into multiple resources across the city, not just enforcement. But we're all operating in individual silos prior to this Safe Public Action Team. And so our, our data wasn't being integrated. We weren't sharing information and we're not sharing our experiences. And we're likely contacting the same individuals over and over again, just in different spaces within our roles. So we'll go into one of these folks. This is a subject profile of one of our high system users. She's a 50-year-old, 53-year-old woman. I'm going to bring your attention to the harm score that's on the top of this chart, which is around the 3,700 mark. And the reason I want to bring your attention to that is a typical offender that we deal with in our normal offender management practices. Their harm score is usually around the 8,000 to 11,000 mark. So what this tells us then is that this particular individual is not ever going to read that, reach that threshold for offender management teams in our traditional ways. However, we have had 209 century, that's our records management. So we've had 209 reports submitted on this individual on our system in the past eight years. She's had 17 warrants in the past five years. Most of those are failed to comply and breaches. We've had a total of 12 LRT reaction or interactions recorded in our system. That's doesn't include anybody else's system like transit just in the last two years and multiple stations citywide. We've included the flags. And so this subject became to our attention in 2018. She was facing some challenging mental health issues, was connected with source, became quite ambivalent whenever police responded to any calls for service from from the public, and then continued to experience some complex wicked problems. She was barred from a number of our support agencies and our shelter systems, became to more of our attention as we tried an offender management approach. And again, recognizing that we're, we're not dealing with multiple criminal convictions here. What we're dealing with is multiple subject interactions, but not necessarily something that's going to be dealt with in how we traditionally deal with individuals. I want to share with you because this is a map of the contacts that we've had with this individual throughout the City of Calgary. And I want to draw your attention to the fact that even though there was only 12 interactions recorded at a physical LRT station, it's very clear that the female is using the transit system line to traverse the city based on that. So you showed a map of our transit network to the side. And so clearly, she is traveling throughout the city and moving into community, which is where we're having contact with her, but it's in close proximity to our transportation lines. This is very common when we're, now that we've had a chance to take a look at this data and we're seeing this pattern repeated over and over again. So and again, I want to reinforce the fact that this is just CPS information. So if we add in transit information, if we add in bylaw information and our social partners, it's very likely that there's double and triple the dots on a map like this for contacts with this vulnerable individual. for contacts with this vulnerable individual. Just to give you a sense of the type of interactions that we are having and our partners are having. So we just grabbed a handful. So for this individual was attempting to use a bank card in a restaurant, wasn't able to pay, refused to leave, and the business owner contacted police. A month or so later, a similar situation, causing a disturbance in the mall, arrested on outstanding warrant. A month later, randomly accosting a couple of citizens in the downtown court and a minor assault happened in a pass-by. So within a week, another encounter at an LRT station. And then a month later, another disturbance in another business elsewhere in the city with a random citizen getting assaulted. And then finally, another disturbance in a public location. And that was the sixth time that CPS itself had responded to this individual. We're aware that our partners were also responding the same time manner. So I say this just because I want folks to understand the complexity of some of the individuals that we are interacting with on our transportation lines, but not just in there, but in our other public spaces within the city. So it's not something that is going to cross into that criminal threshold. And if it does, the likelihood of a long extended sentence is very low. So the chance to access services through our usual means is very limited.
One of the things that I think is important to note is that whenever someone comes in contact with police and it results in a criminal charge being put against them, each of those matters, they run concurrently? Yeah, concurrently. So what that means is that they may have a contact in June, results in a first appearance court date and then some court orders and some conditions, and then another contact in July. That is a completely separate matter before the courts with separate court dates, separate conditions, and it is a completely different process. And so what that looks like with someone like this subject or this high system user is that it looks a little bit like this, where I have a hard time remembering when my next dentist appointment is. Never mind 15 different court matters with disparate court dates and appearances and crowns and trying to access legal aid and compile even just the charges that she has against her. It gets quite complex. And then some of these charges may be dropped, the conditions change. And even the conditions on one order may contradict conditions in a different order. So it's really difficult to expect someone who is struggling with mental health or addictions or any other sort of challenge that they have in their life to be able to stay on top of something like this and know what matters they have against them.
It is important to highlight that because these are some of the same individuals that our public and our business owners in our core and public spaces are also encountering. And it may feel frustrating to see the same person over and over again at their particular location. So we really wanted to bring to attention what a typical profile of one of our high system users looks like to understand the complexity of that and how we have to navigate with our partners through something like this. The fortunate part is, as a result of this technology that we've been able to leverage, we have access to this data now. So I want to talk a little bit about where we're going as a result of that. So we've begun some work here where we've been partnered very closely with our transit peace officers, particularly since assisting in building the new transit strategy, which you are all aware of. There's going to be geographic ownership with our transit peace officers, which is a significant shift, having some ownership of the lines, but also being able to be able to assist us in understanding where some of these high system users are spending their time and tracking folks through the city so we can try to tap into those resources to intersect on the activity. We have mental health clinicians that are in the process of being embedded in every single district office. This helps us with those mental health challenges that a lot of these clients are facing. We're working very closely with our bylaw partners on this joint management team, with our encampment teams and tackling problems as they're emerging. We obviously have that dial-in through the joint management team to our community social partners. So this will tap into a wide variety of resources. And then, of course, this is all dealt with through our Safe Public Spaces Task Force and Joint Group. So we're working very closely with our partners. We meet weekly to talk about some of these complex issues and as they're arising and the locations they are and some of the individuals involved. You won't see it on this particular chart, but we're also partnered very closely with Alberta Prosecutions. We're working with Crown Council to try to work together as well on educating. It's not good to have multiple concurrent files moving through the courts at the same time and having an individual who's already facing significant challenges navigate that by themselves. So with the support of our partners from probation and from corrections and from the court system and our city partners, the goal is to provide that wraparound approach. And then the last segue would be that to the situation tables that are being built and some of the programs in the other bureau and some of which you heard about earlier this evening. The goal is to try and direct and funnel some of these high system users through those programs where they have wraparound supports. And the objective would be to reduce the interactions, not only with Calgary Police Service, but with all our city partners and our agencies. So I'm cognizant of the time because I know we were given a very short runway to try and throw all that at you. So I'll just open that up if there's any questions.
That was excellent. Thank you so much. And your examples and the way it was presented really helps really bring home the situation. So I'll turn it over to Commissioners and start with Commissioner Ogil.
This is great. I guess, and maybe you may have answered the question at the end. Is this dataset dashboard only workable around transit? Like I'm thinking, we've heard several times where we have, you know, we got the ratio of contact is like 12 to 1 in lots of other places than the transit stations. So like, you know, if every service person could have this dashboard, is that, are we going to be able to have that? I'll just stop there and then I'll ask my other question. Do you guys own the IP? And as a rebuttal to Counselor Wong's comment, if it's patented, we could be selling it to other services around the world and maybe the Calgary Police Commission could help and join some cash flow to the business. I'll just ask those questions. You could answer those questions.
Sorry, I guess the first question, has it been patented? No. Should we? It sounds like we should. First, as a result of this development, I've just lost one of my fantastic team members. Not lost, she's moving on to another team here. So I don't want you to advertise anymore because I need to keep my talented folks with me. No. So I think, if I heard you right, you're asking if this dashboard is accessible to everybody? No, it's an internal resource for us. And the reason being is we have some complicating limiting factors with our current legislative legislation, which I'm certainly not the most knowledgeable about. I know our legal counsel could probably speak more to that. We have some restrictions on the type of information that we can share with our public partners if it's outside the public space.
I didn't mean outside the public space. I meant all the other officers in the police force.
Oh, yes, yes.
Like, yeah, like Deputy Gill's got, you've got that dashboard up there, right? So, yeah, that was my question. It wasn't about, no, no, I understand that.
Oh, my apologies.
It's being able to use it because it isn't, this just doesn't happen with, that poor lady isn't the only one that's doing it. And it isn't just transit. That was the reason for the question. And if the IP is owned by the city, get it in there. Own it.
Yeah, I can speak to the app a little bit. So one of the things that was unique about this dashboard, we have several dashboards within the service that present data in a specific way or for a specific unit or for a specific purpose. What was unique about this one was that we combined disparate data sources into one place. And that is an extremely complex process because no two sets of data look the same. Even the way the names and data births are formatted make it very complex to combine. So this was our first try at combining about six disparate sources into one place to say this is the totality of the picture. This is the whole view of what we've interacted with this subject for. And so we're very early in that process and I think it's something that we're going to continue integrating into our other dashboards. That said, we did have the rollout of the mobile application in September and that is for all interactions across the city, not just for LRT. So it still functions very well for LRT interactions. We still have that underlying purpose that it was built for, but now it has been expanded to be used across the service and we have several thousand members using it at this point.
Great. That's very good. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Nissen-Jordan, I think, was next.
Thanks. Couple of questions. The data you quoted is from 2022 and yet it's, you know, immediate, real time. So I was a little surprised that we couldn't provide at least some of the 23 data, especially around the interactions that we had with the sheriffs and the other components that came on. So I would assume there'll be an update of that with the next report. The other question or the other comment I had is it's more related to what are you doing with it? So the individuals, so the 1,000 people that are using it, have you had any outcomes from that? Any success stories that might lend a little bit of support to, yeah, this is a great thing because it's information, but we have to be able to do something with it.
So first of all, I'll apologize if I misspoke. That was 2023 and I pulled those stats at noon. So we are as real time as we can get on that one and I apologize for misspeaking. And then do you want to hand it over to Tam for a second?
Sure. Yeah, I think it is important to know. For the immediate successes, it's giving our officers information in real time with the individual they're dealing with. So with the example that we pulled, there was an instance on one day where there were six different interactions with the same individual in six locations throughout the city and those officers had no idea. So had there been an opportunity to intersect, typically for like a disturbance-like behavior or just yelling randomly, we're probably going to just try to move the person along, offer them some supports, connect them with some services in the city. Had we known that we had already interacted with that same individual six times in the last hour or two, maybe our action would have been different. We're now placed to be able to do that. So it gives us a sense of maybe there's an escalation in activity. Maybe there's a deterioration of mental health. Maybe there's a need that we can address in real time, but also maybe they have just engaged in other harmful activity throughout the city and that might make our decision a little bit different. So we're giving our officers real-time information to make better decisions in the time that they're happening. And more importantly, also officer safety information. So it showed earlier that there's flag information that's pulled in as well. So the officer can see if there's a caution on an individual. So if they are starting to show a pattern of escalating behavior or dangerous behavior, erratic behavior, we want to know that ahead of time and so we can prepare for that. And then also tap into maybe some mental health supports when we're responding to a call. I'm not sure if that addresses your question for the immediate KPI.
So I'm going to go back at both questions. So first of all, the first slide was 2022, at least that's what it's labeled. So I don't, I think you were talking about, yes, it is a real time, but the number of interactions, I was just curious to see where the trend is from 2022 through 2023. So that's the number that I was questioning. So thanks for the real time. But the other part is, so I know, I think this is fantastic that we can use the availability of the data, but it's been in place since September. I'll lay 10 to 1 that there's been days where even this same individual has had more than one interaction. Do we have, and maybe this is a question for, you know, Deputy Chief Gill, is have we had examples where, not just potential, but actual success or use of this that said, yes, my God, this made a big difference with this person?
Yeah. So great questions, Commissioner. And I would just say that in terms of timing, this is something that was just rolled out in September. So we've got it. We've got it in the hands of our membership now. And the work has just begun, as you'll see on the last slide, now engaging with transit, engaging with our social safety partners, engaging with other mental health services to say, how do we get those wraparound services? The work has just started with crowns and the courts to say with all those court dates, how do we centralize that? So very much in the early stages of that. I think there's an opportunity for us to come back, certainly maybe on a quarterly or semi-annual basis. And we could provide you those stories of certain individuals that have a certain harm score and all the services in terms of, because when you look at the services involved between police and transit and bylaw and other services, they're high system users. So how do we get those wraparound services, as Tam mentioned, and get those people in the right services that they individually need? And that's a stage we're just in now with a lot of the work through CSIF and our community partners. So I would say as a city, as a corporation, as our separate entities have come together, because there's been a lot of collaborative work that has occurred this year with our transit partners, with our bylaw partners that Deputy Toffick started. And we have a lot of members on our communities, or sorry, a lot of our members that are on those committees. So that work is there, but I think we can regularly report on that moving forward because I think we need to see the results of the work that we've just put forward now.
Thank you. Commissioner Iduran?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wong and Commissioner Campbell. So we'll go through and then Commissioner Tangi. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you very much for the presentation. Like I do really appreciate the amount of effort. I understand the background work and this is fantastic work actually. So I don't actually have a question. I mostly more of a commendation that you guys have done a very fantastic job here. And I think this is where we need to be in time of policing for this kind of information. You know, everybody's going to data-driven AI, machine learning and stuff like it. This is what you are building the foundation for right now. The comment I will have is now, this is done for a specific purpose, but you have to start thinking that with the kind of information you are collecting right now, other agencies will need to get access to the information. So you have to start looking in that perspective or that thinking in terms of the legal ramifications. How much talk can you share with them? Because you have the base now, you can start putting layout information like getting correlation relationship with, from the shelter, from the hospital. You know, this is going to go endless with this kind of information. The other thing that we talked about is I know eventually CPS will come back to the.
Excuse me, Commissioner, can you speak a little closer to your microphone? Thank you.
So I know eventually the CPS might come back to the commission for maybe resources and the help push. I can see that coming. What I also suggest is that before that time comes, you should try to stick with, talk with the other agencies as well. But this is going to go beyond CPS the way it's coming. And I know within the Calgary city, they also have a department there that deals with geospatial data as well too. So you might also lean on them to see what they have in place right now in terms of mapping and all the kind of database. The mobile app, I'm very familiar with it. That is a great, great way to go eventually as well too. But I think the biggest thing to start thinking about is that this is not going to stop here. You are going to, this is going to grow way bigger than what you have planned for. I have to think about that, how it's going to look in six months, in one year and in two years down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong?
Thank you. First off, sorry, I just want to commend you first off on the dashboard. And I've seen a lot of dashboards done and this is a very, very high-quality one. So thank you for that. The question I've got is just very simple. When you take a look at the dashboard and from an officer's perspective, without having to read through everything, what's the first thing do you think they look at? What's, you know, when you're looking at a particular, in this particular case, a 53-year-old lady, what do you think the first thing they are looking at is on that dashboard of information?
I can speak on this. Being a frontline analyst, I work in District 2, especially closely with our mountain bike unit. And I know anecdotally, they've come to me at times where they've issued, or it became known through the app that they've issued two tickets already in a two-day period and now they're interacting with that subject for a third time. And so being able to just even know that those interactions have taken place and have that on your phone in your hand while you're dealing with that person might lead to, in this case, it led to calling the COT team out and saying, it's going to bring no difference to issue another ticket now, a third ticket in two days.
It's just a piece of paper at this point. So I know from speaking to them, it was allowing them to move those subjects through the laddered approach, saying, okay, this isn't working. Let's call cot out and see if we can get them access to some resources, maybe get them out of the area and into an area where there's shelter or maybe a detox or whatever it is that they needed. So just having that information and being able to make better decisions about when to move up that laddered approach has been feedback that I've received from my mountain bike unit.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for that. And myself not being on the front lines like many others, but I'll take a very naive perspective. When I look at that, I would probably say, what type of, you know, person am I dealing with? Am I dealing with a person who is, has law enforcement sort of infractions in the past or more, you know, social services issues in the past? So, you know, if I were to look at that, assuming those are the two things, to me, it was like 60, 40, 40, 30, you know, where's the numbers at? So then I can instantly triage that this person is really more a law enforcement issue versus a social services issue. Just that first glance, that's all I'm getting at. Second question is to the question about the data being provided. Is it, when you say it's restricted to officers, is it available to city bylaw officer, peace officers so that they have the same assessment when they get to, you know, get to the service?
Not currently, no. And for what I alluded to earlier, we have FOIP legislation that restricts and binds us. If we're operating in a public safety context and the individual is causing harm, we can share information with our partners. That's very limited because most of these individuals we're talking about here are not necessarily falling into that category. So what we're doing is working closely with our partners about what can they share with us to put in our system so that we can then make better decisions as we're partnering with them on a number of these initiatives in real time. Oftentimes, from that earlier graph, we're all launching at the same time and having those conversations. Bylaw violations and tickets are, I don't want to take you down the justice rabbit hole, but that information is all in one Alberta government-owned database. So we can see when any of our partners are issuing multiple violation tickets to the same individual. And then that's a way of accessing that information that way. So right now, at this current time, we're not on the same systems. We don't have agreements between agencies. It's something we're certainly discussing. But I'm not, certainly not the person to speak to that. I would leave that to our legal team.
Yeah, I think, you know, version 2.0 of this, having a different view available to civilians as opposed to your law enforcement would be beneficial because at the end of the day, this 53-year-old lady could be, you know, addressed by, you know, an officer versus a peace officer versus a bylaw person. And so it's just one individual and it'd be, you know, useful to any of three providers to be able to see this. Last question is, the one chart that you have of the however many LRT stations and all the instances there, is that available again to the joint management team so that they can provide that as insight to councillors? Could we, through our, I forget the director's responsibility, Ian Bushnell, Ian Bushnell sends us every week a snapshot. And having this as part of that snapshot would really give us a perspective because, you know, from our perspective, as I say, you know, councillor Wines, myself and other councillors, we get the questions all the time. Lions Park LRT station, Lions Park LRT station. But yet when you look at the chart here, that's, you know, way down on the line of everything else. So again, I think it'd be provided through the joint management team, through, you know, Director Bushnell, that'd be great as well. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Topic.
Thanks. And just to add, councillor, the data, it can, some of it is shared through JMT. So every week that they meet, the high frequency locations, all of those things can be shared at aggregate. So it's not personally identifying information, those types of things. So that can be shared and is. I think, you know, this is exceptional work by these two to put this together, having sort of worked through this over the last number of years. I can tell you from the officers that I've spoke to who have that data in their hands to make the right decision at the right time is critical for better outcomes. The harm score that Tamara referenced is really important because that is based on your UCR crime occurrences that you've been involved with. And they take that so that it takes some bias out of why you might be dealing with a certain offender as a priority. It's about the crimes that have been committed, not about, you know, their behavior in the moment. So it does give the ability to prioritize. So I see moving forward, if you look at the 3,000-plus individual interactions that they've had with different distinct individuals, only a small number of the ones that are harm offenders. So this will give us the ability to prioritize case management. So huge benefit.
Thank you. Edie Murphy, please go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. I was just going to add a little bit of context around some of the privacy issues. We have been making submissions to the Government of Alberta through the AACP and directly on privacy legislation, trying to modernize some of the provisions around our ability while still keeping stringent privacy requirements because these are vulnerable people and we don't want their law enforcement information certainly abused. But we do, in modern policing, we're moving, as you can see through this presentation, it's about managing people, not about managing individual interactions. And the law is more geared around individual police interactions as opposed to how do we comprehensively and holistically support and manage people? We are working much more creatively towards Action Table Calgary and the Situation Table with United Way, looking at using this information, which will start in the new year, to identify some individuals who are at acutely elevated risk of harm, either to themselves, to their families or to others, and bringing those situations forward to tables with our community partners. Firstly, in a de-identified manner. So to use sort of a case management approach, sharing as little or potentially no personal information as required. And then there's kind of a laddered approach where ideally with the person's consent. But if not, if we believe there is that acutely elevated risk, we start to share some personal information with the objective of providing those supports. I think traditionally, privacy legislation looks at imminent risk as like right now. There's going to be a harm right now. But when you deal and support with individuals, we need to look at it a bit differently so that it's chronic risk over time resulting in what we would argue to be cumulative acute risk. So it's definitely something in flight. It would help if we could see some legislative change to ease that a little while still providing a high degree of privacy protection. But within the legislative scheme we have now, we're doing the best we can to sort of look at creative ways to exactly what you were speaking to, Commissioner, kind of how are we going to use this? And how can we take this information to identify those people that would be, would benefit most from very targeted interventions from our community partners, AHS or whoever else may be appropriate in that circumstance?
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful context. Excellent. Commissioner Tenge and Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report. I think it's great. I think to start off, it's almost an apology as a psychiatrist that CPS is the one that's stuck with the burden of something that is not just on CPS's burden. We're talking about individuals with severe mental illness, often comorbid addiction. And, you know, chicken and egg there in many cases. And so, you know, it's actually more of a comment than question is imploring that our city councillors bring this back to the city. Because what are we going to do now that we know this data? Because someone who's worked in this field for a while, we've known this data forever. Any officer on the ground has known this data forever. It's great now that we have technology to prove, yes, see, we're right. But what's the plan? And how do we move forward with that plan? What's the city's plan, which I'm not asking anybody to answer that today? You know, we have this great addiction and mental health strategy by the city. Not one addiction specialist was involved in that. How do we move forward with the data that we have? And I guess that's going to be my question is, you know, we have this, okay, we're going to bring everyone together to talk about this. Who is everyone and how are we actually going to do that? Is that actually happening or is it just a nice infographic? Sorry. Anyways.
I'll just start here at a high level, just to say, you're right. And I actually think that we're in a better place than we've been before in the sense that, of course, the government is building out the recovery-oriented systems of care. I think there's more resources available within the system. It's not fully built out. And so I would say that it's not, it's not fully going to operate just yet. But I think with the, when you think about where we've come to with something like virtual opioid dependency program, the fact that when people are taken into custody now, in days and years gone by, you would have just gone and sat there until you had a bail hearing and nobody would have ever thought about your vulnerabilities and the fact that we're putting you, you came in addicted and homeless. And so we had you for 24 hours, we put you back out again, and we somehow expected that something different was going to happen. Whereas now there are opportunities within the system and I think more to come. I think there's more investment that's gone into some of our shelter partners and this type of thing. And again, Deputy McClellan can speak to the work that's being done around the situation tables. And even to Edie Murphy's point, as a result of this work, we have found that there's limitations in the information that we are able to share with partners very legitimately with Alberta Health Services and vice versa. And so those issues are being elevated to the government to say, if you really want this to work well, this is what would need to happen. And I know this is a government that's got an appetite to address some of those issues. So I think we, I think we are in a better place than we were. It's not perfect yet, but it's moving in the right direction and helping to see and give officers, to Deputy Topic's point, looking at the harm score. I was, when councillor Wong said, what would you look at first? I'd look at the harm score first because you can tell then whether you're dealing with somebody who's criminal or vulnerable. It's a very different thing and a very different intervention required there. And so you can start to stream them down the right, down the right road. The criminal part, we always were able to deal with. The vulnerable part is where we still have gaps. But because of the focus that's being put there now, I think we'll begin to close some of those gaps. Because again, I've said in Calgary, we have a lot of resources. It's just getting them connected and getting them to the people that need them because evidently the people are not going to the resources. So hopefully that helps a bit. I don't know if you want to speak to the situation table and how that's.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chief. And I think I might have mentioned it at the last ERAC Subcommittee, what we're doing with our situation tables. And of course, the ultimate goal with reach-up YYC. So we've been looking at the Toronto model, their action tables. And we're looking, they're called their situation tables, where they've got over 100-plus partners who come together, the police, and look at. So this data will be very, very critical to look at these people coming forward to see and see what wraparound services can we offer to these individuals that is not just police. And so as Catherine said, it's anonymized. We're trying to work through the legislation. We're working through AACP. We're in conversations with the GOA. We've got MOUs through the legal services that we're working on. And we're quite optimistic. So we've got a goal for the end of January to start up the action in the situation table. So as the chief said, we've come a long, long way. And of course, many of you know, the North Star is for our reach-up, you know, bricks and mortar with a building where we're co-located, co-integrated, where we do have those one-stop-shop services, wraparound services, and another place for potentially individuals to come for a short term, a short period of term where they are looking for services in one spot rather than having to navigate through many, many different areas. So as the chief said, as Catherine said, we've come a long way. We've got a very aggressive goal for the end of January. Many of you who have been on the journey with my team over the last couple of years, it has been two and a half years in the works. And we are, as I said, optimistic that this data will be super helpful for the end of January when we start up our situation tables, where the right resources to the right people at the right time. And you will start, we are optimistic that we will start to see many positive interactions and engagements with those who need it.
Thank you very much. And last word to Commissioner Campbell, please go ahead.
Thanks very much. This is excellent work. It's real time and responsive. It's data to humanize a person and to improve members' decision-making. That's what we need. Two questions, super quick. Transit users are mostly women. Have we done any gender-based analysis on that higher-level data in terms of the perceptions of safety as it relates to it? I don't know, Ms. Deke, I know we've talked about this before. Oh, you wanted a second one too? Okay, well, so I'm going to just, as another woman in STEM, I'm right on. I applaud you for your next tool because you will be asked to make another one. You know this, right? Are you considering the use of generative AI in your work? And that's just more me being interested.
So note, we have not looked at gender or race, but it is something that we are considering going forward, really treading lightly because the goal is just to make sure that we're getting people the resources that they need when they need them and recognizing that that's not always police and knowing when we're having a lot of contacts when we necessarily don't need to be. So it's something that I think we're going to look forward to in the future. And now I've already forgotten your second question.
Generative AI.
Oh, yes.
Women in STEM, what you doing next?
Gosh, I don't know.
Well, I refer to, she's been stolen from our team. I say stolen, I say that lightly. She's moving on in her career. She's moving over to missing person, cold case homicide. And I think that's a bonus. And I can see Acting Deputy Alef is smiling about that. Because the same folks who often go missing are in that vulnerable category as well. And so we feel like it's a great segue. So yay STEM, yay Amanda, and yay CPS for moving in that direction. Because we have already had some preliminary conversations talking about the missing person population as well.
And an opportunity to be responsive to our, the calls for justice for missing murdered Indigenous women and two-spirit girls and women. So thank you.
I have two more questions on this, Commissioner, councillor Wines, and then Commissioner Hope.
Thanks. With the limitations on data sharing and the current funding model of transit officers and bylaw, how are you going to measure displacement when you may now be called in after someone's had already two interactions with other orders of enforcement?
Okay, so I'll take that one. I'm not sure I can answer it fully, but what I can say is I've been working very closely with transit public safety, with our initial data. We've been identifying our harm offenders first and having conversations about that. They, some of the transit data is in our system. So we have access, Amanda was able to bring in the transit ban information. So we're aware of when they have contact with an individual. We can now see that in our data. They also, their transports are also recorded in our system. So we can see interactions for our transit peace officers as well. So this is a piece of work that's going to have to evolve over time. And so that's probably more of a legal question.
So when it deals with a specific law enforcement investigation, we can share information. So if we're looking for somebody, if we're, you know, in a high, in a crime situation or a violent situation, we can. And then, but this comes back to my comment that the legislation is around us sharing information for a law enforcement purpose. When we want to share information to help someone or to provide supports or for something that's not explicitly to sort of advance the investigation of a crime, that's when we run into trouble with the disclosure. So when we're trying to sort of say, here's the universe of this person, the legislation doesn't allow us to do that. But we can share like those individual interactions, investigations to solve a crime. So that's kind of where we struggle. It's just, it's not modern in the sense of managing, managing that person and everything that goes along with them.
Yeah, because we're still going to have that blind spot. Like where by having a uniform on transit, the people will move along to somewhere else. And we're not counting that. Whereas when that first uniform is you guys, then there's a count. So I'm just trying to struggle when, if we're going to keep funding, trying to solve this problem and we just have made a bigger blind spot in tracking data, how do we help Calgarians?
Just in relation to how we're going to work with transit. So the transit, the public transit safety strategy, which was approved and they got the funding through the most recent budget adjustments, will bolster their staffing. And we know that with the historical data that that will likely cause some displacement. So our response and our resources will focus not just on transit, on other areas. And we can, we will see that and we will be responsive to that. So we're not just going to load up on transit and double down on transit because we know it'll have other effect on community. It'll be working very much in a coordinated way with transit to be responsive to what we're seeing in real time. So this type of data will be exceptionally helpful for us in assessing where we need to be and when. And so I think in the future, as we share information as we can, it will really help us to be responsive to community across all sides.
And one last question. In your case study, there's a few data points that look like there were interactions potentially after being processed. And the concern of community about bus stops and people being released. Um, and the concern of community about bus stops and people being released. Um, how are we gonna show, will we be able to make adjustments or will there be policy decisions based if this data mapping shows that there are more touchpoints after people have been processed in the Northwest?
Yeah, absolutely. I think when we launched um the first piece of technology, which was basically end of May, I think. We've, we've been through multiple iterations and each time we encounter a new situation, we take it back and um, and collaborate and try to identify what other information do we need to make better decisions? Are we missing pieces of information because of an incident that may have happened? And we've learned something from that. And then that gets incorporated. So it's a continual iterative process. Um, where we're trying to address those gaps each time.
Awesome. Thank you.
And Commissioner Hope.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm just gonna make a comment simply because it would be remiss of me not to speak to this issue. Um, being the, the former Transit Chief of Public Safety. Um, incredible work has been done. Uh, I think one of my colleagues spoke about what's one of the outcomes from this. It's really the information, the data that you have before you. Um, I can speak to the fact that the Crown never understood fully the problem because they only saw it from the transit side or they only saw it from the policing side. When you start to marry those two together, you have a complete picture of um what has transpired. And I can, it's a flashback going back to uh 2021 and the safety for all. Uh, one of the mandates was we were never gonna police ourselves out of this problem, no matter how much money we threw at it. And so to see how collaborative the approach has been to this date is massive. And we are certainly trending in the right direction. Um, and to my colleague, Commissioner Campbell, uh, transit does have gender-based data. So uh, the, the information is out there, um, is, is available. I, I can only see um the way up as we begin to share data, as we hopefully overcome some of the challenges there. But overall, a great deal. And I'll stop there. Cause I could speak all night. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's probably a perfect place to end this uh discussion. So um, amazing work and, and thank you for bringing it to us and, and allowing us to dive into deep into all the details. So thank you so much. And um although you're moving, at least you're still within CPS. So thank you so much. We appreciate that. Um, with that, um, we'll say thank you to those and we'll move on to uh our next item. Uh, 5.3. And I just want to comment that um time is passing. And we still have a fair number of reports here to do. So we, we won't skip over this. Um, we do have time and if we have less time for media, that would be awesome. Um, so we'll just take it out there. Um, but uh, before then, so we'll turn it over to the um crime update. So we have their two reports here. And if we can go through both those reports first, and then we'll take questions from commissioners. So I think that's the, the direction to go in. So I will turn it over to you. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm picking up what you're putting down. So you, you have the report in front of you. There have been some updates in the last week, so I'll give you the, the updates as of today. So there have been 94 shootings in Calgary, which is a 23% decrease from the same period in 2022. The number of shootings so far this year is on par with the five-year average for the same period. Uh, there have been several very public and brazen shootings that have been connected to organized crime since we last reported to commission. And we recognize the sense of safety impact that this has had on our Calgary community. We've responded to these recent shootings by engaging resources from across the service to gather intelligence, investigate these offenses and engage in suppression efforts to prevent retaliatory violence. Our organized crime and offender management section is monitoring almost 350 offenders with ties to organized crime. This includes ensuring offenders are aiding, are abiding by court ordered conditions, suppressing planned violence and conducting investigations and enforcement as necessary. Since the beginning of 2023, at least 1,628 firearms were seized, recovered or turned into police in Calgary. 395 of these guns met the definition of a crime gun. By uh earlier today, 18 homicides had occurred in 2023. Uh, in 2022, we had 25 homicides reported during the same time period. I want to uh just acknowledge and appreciate the Chair's opening remarks about the incredible work done by the Historical Homicide Unit. In order, as they've been solving cases that are decades old. These are just more examples of our investigators relentless pursuit of justice, no matter how much time has passed. If you commit murder in Calgary, uh, we are coming after you. Cybercrime. Our cybercrimes team has taken a Canadian lead agency position on an international ransomware investigation. After a Calgary company was the victim of a cyber attack in April of 2023. Uh, our cybercrimes team investigated and shared intelligence regarding previously unknown threat actors with our international law enforcement partners. From these linkages to international investigations were identified and the National Cybercrime Coordination Centre, which is NC3. And Europol requested CPS take a Canadian lead position as multiple victims have been identified across the country. This is extraordinary. This doesn't usually happen for municipal agencies to take an international lead like this. In late September, our cybercrimes team investigators attended Europol headquarters in the Netherlands with a trip funded by NC3. 16 countries were represented and our cybercrime stream will continue to investigate Calgary and Canadian evidence by way of judicial orders for evidential seizures and collaborate with international partners. Our drug undercover street team continues to focus on trafficking drugs in Calgary in recent months. Our Dust has concluded three separate undercover operations involving numerous offenders that have yielded 56 criminal code charges and 54 controlled drugs and substance act charges. I'll just conclude by saying, our Calgary Alert investigators recently laid charges against a sex trade worker for allegedly drugging and robbing at least one Calgary victim in October of 2022. It is believed that there are additional victims in Alberta who may have been reluctant to come forward previously. The accused is also facing similar charges in British Columbia. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, appreciate that. I was actually referring to the commissioners uh in terms of as opposed to yourself.
I skipped a ton of stuff.
You did. You did an awesome job, but maybe we can get back and you can raise any of the highlights that um, that you would like to as you go along. So anyhow, thank you so much. That's good. Um, so I will turn it over. We've got Commissioner Siddiqui to start and then uh Campbell and Nice and Jordan.
Thank you for the highlights. Um, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, was that both reports or just one? That was just one. I'm so sorry. My apologies. Um, I will turn it over to Deputy.
I, I do am uh putting, uh, picking up what you're dropping down as well. Uh, even though you're talking to the commissioners. Um, like just brief remarks. So you have the October crime updates from the Bureau of Community Posing, uh, which been provided part of your reading material. Um, so I just want to talk about some quick highlights in terms of uh some insights of ongoing crime and trends and some efforts that we're putting forward uh to address those. In the month of October, officers dealt with 47,000 calls for service uh from the Bureau. 32% were proactively officer-generated, 68% were public-generated. The top three public calls for service are checks on welfare, non-injury collisions and miscellaneous, which largely includes social disorder, non-criminal code violations and assistance to other partner agencies. Uh, as you'll see in the crime stats, assaults have moderately increased over the five-year average, similar to what we provided in September. We believe this is driven by common assaults and assault on peace and police officers, a concerning trend we're carefully monitoring. September data and all three quarters of 2023 show a concerning rise in assault police officer, particularly in the resisting arrest category. We'll be doing a deeper dive analysis on this through our corporate reporting team. For October, common assault has been primarily identified as a primary driver. Uh, preliminary reviews indicate a larger volume of assaults being reported in District One in comparison to the rest of the city with Saturday being the most prevalent day of the week. Assault with a weapon, commercial robberies, vehicle crime and break and enters all saw a substantial decrease over the five-year average. Disorder calls also just below the five-year average, but have moderately decreased in September monthly snapshot. Uh, and quickly, I'd like to highlight some brief examples of investigative work from the month of October, including a three-month investigation into break and enters and thefts from Sephora stores. Through investigative strategies, two well-known offenders were identified in October 26th. Both were successfully located, arrested and charged. Also in October, officers responded to four robberies in the Northeast uh involving people attempting to sell their mobile devices through Facebook Marketplace who met with buyers. The victims were all bear sprayed in the face and had their devices stolen. Uh, two youths were identified as a suspects and were each charged with three counts of robbery. A third remains outstanding and officers are working to identify that individual. October also saw the conclusion of a drug and firearms investigation that began in February. Officers identified a network involving a drug trafficking activity, stolen property and vehicles and a robbery where a firearm was fired during the offense. A search warrant resulted more than $60,000 in illegal drugs being seized, along with three handguns and the recovery of stolen property. Three people were charged, including the primary suspect who is facing 33 criminal code and drug, control drugs and substance act charges. And turning to public safety, there have been 19 fatal collisions this year, five of which involved impairment. There were four collisions where pedestrians were injured. Our traffic section will be promoting Child Safety Seat Month throughout November and continue to work on the Joint Safer Mobility Plan with our partners at the City of Calgary. Uh, those are just some of the highlights. Uh, there are many more highlights I'd like to share. And as a plug from my folks uh in Pamaru, um, Michael Dunn's team. So if you wish to see any more, uh, follow us on social media at YYCC seized account. Thank you, Chair.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, much appreciated. So we'll go to questions from commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Siddiqui, please go ahead.
Thank you for those reports. Um, just wanted to, um, first of all, comment about your, the cybercrime team and how fantastic they are. Another group of superstars. And uh, I don't know how you're gonna keep them. So I hope there's a plan on how to do that. Um, that's all. Um, and then also wanted to recognize, uh, there was a comment in here about a file that the child abuse team had worked on, which was very difficult. And I just wanna thank them for the work they do because they see some of the most horrendous things in this city. So my question is around uh the degrees, decrease in shootings. So we keep hearing there's a decrease in shootings. But it seems to be every day, there's unfortunately something new. Are these shootings different than the shootings that were happening last year? Like in terms of violence and um people, people involved in, in all that?
Thanks for both comments. Um, we do have a plan for our cyber uh, for retention of cyber assets. Uh, we can get into that at another time. Um, we also, I do appreciate your comments towards the, the officers that do the very heavy lifts in child abuse and other related units. Um, it has an impact every day, but they know they're doing incredible work. The shootings. So the, the very simple question is mostly yes, they're the same. Okay. They're over the same types of disputes. Uh, it is a marginal decrease. Or I should say marginally higher, pardon me, than the five-year average. So the five-year average is 88 shootings and we're sitting right now at uh 94 as of today. So overall, is it down over the five-year average? It's not. Um, it's similar disputes. Some of it's organized crime. Some of it is not even attached to organized crime. Some of it is because of the prevalence of guns in our community. And so that's what we've seen over the last five years. It might not be the same offenders. But let's be honest, in some cases, it is the same offenders that have been released and back into the community. So I guess the short answer would be it's very similar to last year's.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Campbell?
Thanks very much. Um, again, so echo the comments from Commissioner Siddiqui. Uh, you now have the, the All-Star analyst. I, I would suggest that there's probably some, you know, retention approaches that might need to be done. I'm looking at you, um, ED Armstrong. Couple of things. Um, are we further able to disaggregate the social disorder category now that you have the All-Star analyst? Um, for me, possible gunshots are very different than indecent acts. And I, I need, I, I feel as though I need to understand those differently. So um, if we can take that away. Um, the other thing that I wanted to look at uh was, was around um domestic violence and intimate partner violence. Um, given that this is the second last day of, of uh gender-based violence uh and the 16 days. In the uh two slides, uh piece that's in our package, um, the number for YW is not the crisis line. Their crisis line is 403 266 0707. Um, 403 266 0707. Um, so if we could, if we could just correct that. Um, but I did have a concern and wanted to get an understanding and some clarity around the reported domestic violence occurrences uh for 2023 for January to August, which are 2,552. Um, and that if I'm gonna do, if I were to do a little chart and some math that would tell me that it's trending upwards, what is, what's occurring in Calgary that's leading to? Is it just a, is it an increase in reporting that people are feeling safer to report intimate partner violence? Is it an actual increase of intimate partner violence? Um, is, what is that?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Campbell. Uh, we felt this question might be coming, so we have an answer. In this case, uh, it is an increase in trust with our work in domestic violence. So we're getting more calls. Uh, I know that sometimes it causes confusion when there's um, when the media reports, sometimes the calls to the shelters are up. So as part of our as part of our interaction with our community partners and our shelters, we know that a lot of times those calls to shelters aren't necessarily to report violence. They're asked questions about shelter. They're asked questions about available care for children, all sorts of other things, but they're all lumped into the same data. So at this point, it's not an increase in violence. It's probably just an increase in trust. And so we can deal with those calls uh through our domestic conflict response team if required. And that, that goes through our whole risk assessment process. Sometimes the work we do generates more calls and we're totally good with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I appreciate that. Um, it's one of the things where I would say earlier this month, uh, when uh Counselor Wong and uh Counselor Penner invited um Mr. Jones um from Norquest College to present, um, who I think is a former colleague of many of you. Um, for Mr. Aizen Edmonton, I asked him, you know, three KPIs please for policing from a trauma-informed perspective with humanity and safety and compassion. And he said three things. Um, one, crime severity index, which we track and it's one of the KPIs we present to city council. Second was um an increase in reporting of uh sexual assault. Um, we know that sexual assault is the most underreported crime in Canada. Uh, I don't need to provide a source for that. Um, and then third um was uh inside out. Um, he talked about it. So where folks that um were not necessarily the best friends of uh the police service become the advocates of the police service. And so you've just validated um with the increase, the increase, pardon me, in domestic violence reporting, um, that it is a, it's an increase in safety, in trust and being able to actually um access those resources to get out of um terrible situations. So thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Nice and Jordan?
Couple of questions. Um, hopefully they're really one-liners. Cybercrime, um big, big issue in, with um healthcare facilities being taken offline. And I'm just wondering if there's any preventive actions being taken in Calgary from that perspective. That's one. The second is the gun smuggling you identified. Um, that there is uh, seems to be an increase coming from the US. What's the partnership that's going on with CBSA in terms of um that gun smuggling? And the third thing is the um, you know, lots of drug uh information, um arrests, that sort of thing. My concern is, are we getting at the dealers? Are we getting at the supply? Or are we focusing more on the users, which is not where we need to be? And do we have enough resources in the drug um portfolio?
If I could get you just to repeat the first question again, I go.
Cybercrime in hospitals.
Okay, the answer? Yes. Um, but I'll expand on that. So part of our partnership with Infocom, which I've talked about before, which is a allows us to look at a cyber range for expanding our skillset and undercover um online activity uh was as a result of us trying to get into um spaces in protecting healthcare by being involved in those types of investigations without getting too deep into this explanation. We can talk about it offline, but we are aware of those things, and we're actively involved in them and looking to prevent them and hold offenders responsible for them. Yes, gun smuggling is up, and I don't have it in front of me, but I looked at it, it was about 5% increase at the border. And that just comes from just some of the changes recently in laws. We actively discuss this regularly. We have a fit unit that we, so we reorganized in the last three years to have a unit that specifically deals with this kind of crime. And CBSA regularly meets with them. I believe that's once every two weeks. There's a mandated meeting where they exchange information about trends so that they can improve investigative efficiencies. So we are actively tackling mid-level and high-level drug investigations. But like every other investigation that we have, there's very few criminals that are just specifically in one business, in one criminal enterprise. So drugs is part of a more broader organized crime piece in most cases. So a lot of times, our drug unit is working in concert with our organized crime teams, our general investigative units. So what we're doing is if we, if we start in a space where it's a mid-level drug dealer, it may lead us to other investigations. So a lot of times, I would suggest that we get to the drugs through many different avenues. I would say this, do we have enough resources in the drug unit to do this? The individual dust team, I'd love to have four or five dust teams, undercover drug officer teams. But we don't, and you've heard us talk about how we only have finite resources for everything. I would suggest that we have an expanded drug investigative program through our district operation teams, through our organized crime teams. And so in essence, we're tackling this problem from many different parts of our service.
Thank you. Great. Counselor Wong, please.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if this is within this topic area. So I'm going to put three questions to you. One was, recently, there was a report, Crest's report. We talked about Albert Policing. And then the question is, how, how has that been beneficial or non-beneficial during the temporary period, and what's the go-forward action on that? The second is that the provincial government most recently made announcements about speed enforcement on our stony trail. And, and again, you know, what, yeah, again, pros and cons associated with that. And to Commissioner Tangi's comment about mental health strategy, the mental health strategy, yes, it was, you know, established by the city. And yes, you know, there could have been different people engaged and supported that. But I think we all know that the mental health strategy requires intergovernmental support, you know, different ministries, as well as our HS, as well as other agencies. But what role can the commission and/or service do to, you know, advance that to a point that is really, really effective? So three questions, if you don't mind.
Sure, thanks, Counselor Wong. So the Crest report, you're right, the report was released here not long ago. That was the evaluation report that we had committed to right at the beginning of Operation Crest. So it was about a four-month pilot, so not particularly long. But at the end of the day, I would say it was helpful. I think, you know, respondents to the survey reported seeing more uniforms. A good number of people felt safer. They were well-aware of the, of the program going on. The report also highlighted some deficiencies or some shortcomings, or really areas for learning. It was a short-duration pilot project that helped us to recognize ways that we could structure differently. Going forward, I think for us in Calgary here, one of the challenges was some of the sheriff's peace officer appointments were more geared to court and prisoner security, this type of thing. So in terms of the reporting and the ability to write tickets and do enforcement and stuff like that, that was somewhat limited. That's something we would definitely look to change going forward so that we could add some extra impact there. We've since had discussions with the province in relation to sort of our thoughts about what a next iteration could look like. And for us, it's around transportation. And mainly because when we think about the disorder and the challenges in the downtown, we know we have officers down there on beats and bikes. But as Tam and Amanda had mentioned, if they go, you know, their first six blocks and they run into people, they arrest. They're now actually loading up those bikes or getting into vehicles and then transporting individuals up to APS, which is a long way away now, near Spy Hill. So we think that the way forward really is to keep your fully capable and operational police officers on the street. And then actually, the sheriff's, some of the function that they perform is around prisoner transport. So we see where folks could stay in their lanes and actually be able to have very complimentary services and supports, which is very similar to what the sheriffs did for us, say, during World Petroleum Congress and that type of thing. So, so yes, so on that point, yes, valuable lessons learned and information shared back and forth with the province and more discussions to be had. So that's Operation Crest. You talked about the automated traffic enforcement. So yes, there was a recent announcement in relation to that. We had written a letter to the province asking for the ability to maybe regain the autonomy to move around locations and that type of thing. You know, in a city this large, automated traffic enforcement is really just one pillar in the larger strategy around traffic enforcement. But I can tell you, it's good for us to be able to get some movement forward. I do note that there's a, there's a continued review for another year or at least a year, which we hope we can actually engage with the province to move that forward perhaps sooner. At the end of the day, you know, we use automated enforcement in areas where either it's high collision locations or in some of the cases on, on major thoroughfares. One of the issues is that there oftentimes is, it's very difficult to do in-person enforcement. If you've ever been out on and stopped for any reason, perhaps you've had a flat tire or whatever on the side of the Deerfoot or Stony Trail, when traffic's moving very quickly, it's very unnerving to be out on the side of the road. You're very vulnerable when you're there. So automated traffic enforcement can play, could potentially, it won't now, but that's fine, could play a role there. I also think that while we're stretched for resources and focusing on the frontline and responding to calls, automated traffic enforcement actually helps us for places like residential traffic safety requests that, you know, that the councillors often hear about, as well as construction sites. We would prefer to put a live officer in a construction site to slow people down, to keep workers safe. However, we haven't been able to do that, given some of the extra pressures around things like protests, World Petroleum Congress, papal visit. Those things tend to take our traffic officers away from the regular duties that they do. That's just a fact of life, and that's another place that automated traffic enforcement can play a role. So, yeah, so we're happy to see it move forward in at least a limited sense. And we'll continue to work with the province to see where we can get from here. And I think your last was more of a comment there, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Ogilvy?
I'll be quick. I think my, further to Commissioner Campbell's comment about the domestic violence occurrences and conflict. If, yeah, if you extrapolate these numbers, it looks like they're going up. I think my question's for Comms Director Dunn. Do we have a heightened commms plan for the city to allow, to keep letting people know that it's okay to call in? Like, because it, you know, if you just looked at these numbers, they don't get any better. And they are better because people are calling in. So I'm just, rather, if you could talk about the comms plan about this.
Yeah, for sure. So we've actually had quite a sustained campaign on social media in relation to this, deliberately trying to make people aware of the importance of reporting. So that's certainly one element. I'll have a chat with our communication strategists back at base and just see if there's any additional information. Yeah, certainly on top of mind.
Anything else on these two reports? Okay, then we can move to the last one, which is the Anti-Racism Action Plan update. So I'll turn it over to whoever's going to lead that.
Thanks very much, Chair.
McLennan, thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll keep my comments very, very brief because I too was picking up what you were laying down, and it's dinner time. They, the team was super thankful for the opportunity to come and meet all of you on November 17th. I brought my racial equity office, I brought my IRT team, I brought my community mobilizers. It was really just great to have that interaction, and they were super thankful and appreciative of that. Many of you will recall, we went through our roadmap and where we're at with that. So I think that was very well received. Our Indigenous Relations Team is now fully staffed, and they're just doing a phenomenal job with the members, the sworn members who are on the team, as well as the Indigenous Community Mobilizers. Our Diversity Resource Team and Police Liaison Team continue to be engaged to support, in support of communities, of all communities impacted by the conflict in the Middle East. We continue to meet with leaders in the community to ensure that appropriate supports are in place for the Jewish and Palestinian Muslim communities. And we will continue to engage protest organizers to ensure public safety and the right to peacefully protest are balanced and paramount. This past Saturday and Sunday, we attended the South Sudanese Cultural Heritage Day Celebration and the Lebanese Heritage Event with members from our Diversity Resource Team, the Community Mobilizers, and Superintendent Rashid and myself. We were honored to be welcomed as invited guests and built on opportunities to share cultural traditions and also discuss topical issues affecting both, all communities. We've also heard from racialized community leaders about their desire for CPS engagement with their youth to discuss our youth programs, educate on crime prevention and hate crimes, and encourage positive, healthy interactions with the CPS. This will take place in the form of planned presentations and discussion groups over the next couple of weeks. Our Crime Prevention Team continues to collaborate with the Diversity Resource Team, partner agencies such as the city, and community partners conducting crime prevention through environmental design assessments throughout the city. These include SEPT heads for Olympic Plaza, mosques and synagogues within the city. The team continues to conduct fraud and cyber safety presentations, address social disorder and community issues through the Coordinated Safety Response Team. I think I spoke about that last time. And conducting safety presentations to businesses and partner agencies throughout Calgary. There's been some brief conversations throughout the evening here about our crisis transformation and call diversion. We're doing incredible work in there. We're moving forward many, many initiatives. We have lots of support, and we're bringing forward a more fulsome report in January to talk about where we're at and the consultants that we've hired with our governance and oversight and KPIs and so forth. So excited to bring that forward in January, and that's all, Chair. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Siddiqui to start?
Thanks, Deputy Chief. Chief or Deputy Chief, could you just comment? There's been a lot of emails floating around in the Muslim community that CPS is not engaged with them. But I know that to be a little bit different. Could you publicly comment on who you've met? Like, not specifics, but who you've met? Sort of how you're keeping them engaged and the work that you're doing with the communities?
I might flip it to Katie after, because of course, we do different things. But certainly, there's been a lot of engagement recently with the Muslim community, which is large, as you know, in Calgary. But really, a lot of it has been around the protest environment right now with the war in the Middle East. Yes, recently, we've had a number of direct meetings, including one at CPS, where we hosted 10 leaders from the Muslim community for really, I think, productive dialogue, just around what's going on in the community, how the community's been impacted by what's going on, and also just sort of the protests and that environment, which is evolving even as we speak. So I think there's been a lot going on there, but really, the, the primary connections probably are through like our Diversity Advisory Boards and our Diversity Resource Officers and that sort of thing who are out as well. So a lot of day-to-day work gets done out of my visibility, but a lot of strategic work as well recently, especially given some of the challenges that we faced around the city.
I'll just briefly add that every single day, every single night, every single weekend, we are in conversations with all of our communities, and that includes the Muslim community and many others. As I've, as I've said before, we're just so fortunate to have really great relationships. I mean, there are some turbulent times right now, and we're trying to navigate through that. But the leaders and the executive and the folks that we're dealing with are incredibly supportive. They know that we need to walk through some of these trials and tribulations together, and we're there to support one another, to learn from one another. As I said just a few moments ago, many of the communities are asking us to engage their youths and to come forward with presentations, and I think that's super key. And we're, I think, at the university next weekend, at a couple of other schools in the upcoming week. So lots of engagement, lots of questions, lots of support. It's, it's, some of it's difficult to navigate through, but we've got people at the table who want to work together and, and resolve this and continue to build our partnerships.
Are there other questions from Commissioners? Counselor Wong, please.
Thank you. I'm not sure how to bring this forward, but in the last week or so, we've had a, you know, a councillor who made statements relative to behavior, and in particular, a particular female, I believe it was, who had her job ripped off. And albeit, I believe that was outside the Calgary jurisdiction, the allegations were that it was maybe more prevalent across jurisdictions as well. And I'm not sure if you can provide a commentary on that one.
I would just say that I did read the article there today, and I did see that. So I'm not even sure what jurisdiction that's from. But at the end of the day, I think it's really important that police officers be culturally competent around, around, you know, important religious symbols like kajabs. I think that, you know, we're fortunate in the Calgary Police Service. We've seen our community become increasingly diverse, to the point that we're the third-most diverse community and city in the country. We know certainly in the Northeast, there's a high volume of people. It might be as high as 80% now that actually identify as diverse. So I would say that the programs that we've got in place and the good work that's been done through Deputy McClellan and her team as well have actually set us up really quite well, and in particular, I think, since 2020, when we had the issues with George Floyd, the murder of George Floyd. And so I think we're in a pretty good place in Calgary. I think the fact of the matter is, there will always be issues that come up, and I look at those as opportunities. Most of those situations, when they arise, I don't think it's a situation where a police officer, somebody was trying to be disrespectful. In some situations, the person didn't know. And oftentimes, they're really open to conversations, which actually does afford an opportunity to learn. And I think it's the job of police leadership to look and see where are the, sort of the data points or the trends going there in terms of what types of challenges are there? And that gives you the opportunity to then look at your training and say, do we have gaps somewhere that we can, you know, that we can close? Neurodiversity was the one that was just brought up earlier. I think that's a good example as well. So anyway, I would just leave that there. I think, I think a lot of work is done, and we've prioritized our relationships with the communities. And that certainly actually puts us in a good place because we oftentimes find ourselves out celebrating, I think Deputy McClellan was saying, celebrating cultural events and that type of thing, which is another opportunity to learn about things that are important to the community.
Any final questions? No, I, I will say thank you very much for all of these reports. I've taken note for myself to be more articulate when I'm suggesting nudges in terms of process, because, what I'm putting down. I, I need to be more clear about that. But the reports were excellent. There was lots of new material tonight and material that we really wanted to dive into. So thank you so much for all of that that's being brought forward. It's a chance for us to explore the really good work and the forward-looking work that's going on in the service. So thank you very much to everyone. The next parts of our agenda for this public session, we start out with the Executive Director Report, and that is a written report. And I will just ask if there are any questions that you would like to direct to the Executive Director? Seeing no questions. The next section of the Representative Updates. These are various Commissioners who represent the Commission on Other Associations and Committees. They have, there are written reports that are included in the material, and I will just ask open question if there's anybody who has a question for any of those reports. No, no questions for that. With that, I will comment on Section 8. There were a number of written submissions that were provided in the materials, and I will just comment that those are provided to all Commissioners, and we all have the opportunity to read those. So thank you to everyone who provided a written, a written comment or submission to us. We appreciate it very much. We need that feedback. And with that, we will move into the other questions and for public guests. So public guests who have registered to speak may now do so. The process is designed to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep the meetings at a reasonable length. Those who have registered to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by Commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. Those who register to ask a question will have two minutes to speak, followed by a member of the Commission or the Calgary Police Service having two minutes to respond. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. We also cannot discuss a complaint about a specific employee or interaction with the police. If you'd like to discuss a complaint against an officer or other employee, please contact our Public Complaint Director or the CPS Professional Standards Section so it can be properly addressed. I would also like to thank everyone who took time to send us the written submissions prior to this meeting. And a reminder that to the members of media, that we'll hear from the public first, and then we will hold immediate availability for you after this section. So with that, I think we're ready for this. So with that, I think we're ready for the first speaker and I will ask if you want us to move.
Not at this point, Chair. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Farah Ali and he would like to ask a question around the protests. Mr. Ali, you should be able to speak now.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Yes, my name is Farah Ali. I am the Executive Director of the Calgary African Collective and I have a question regarding the incident on November 13th, actually, where two black boys were mistakenly arrested and charged with murder. While I know and people acknowledge that the CPS and the city allocated a lot of funds and resources to enter this effort, the actual experiences on the ground for black individuals interacting with CPS largely seems unaffected despite these efforts. The recent case involved the apprehension of the 14-year-old and 18-year-old brothers from the African community with their home broken into, arrested and charged them with murder. Subsequently, the Crown Prosecutor announced the charges were dropped due to new information proving that they were innocent, accompanied by an apology from Chief Newfeld. Now, the incident raised here concerns about the potential of wrongful convictions based on the officer's initial compelling evidence. As a parent of 14 and 15-year-old black boys, I'm concerned by the safety, the fear particularly, particularly when thinking about the possibility of them ending up in the wrong place without evidence to prove their innocence, potentially leading to unjust charges. What if there was no video, for example, for the innocent, these two boys? I posed the question. The problem lies with when CPS arrests black boys. It results in a tunnel vision and swift charge without affording the benefit of the doubt. And this places an undue burden on black individuals to prove their innocence before being assumed guilty. So my question is for the CPS, beyond issuing an apology, which is a good thing, what concrete steps and initiative have been taken to address this systematic problem faced by the black community and to bridge the growing discontent between the police and the black people? That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Chief Newfeld to respond.
Hi, Mr. Ali. Nice to speak to you again. So I guess I would just start off by saying that this is a very unfortunate situation, obviously. It does demonstrate that the homicide investigators, when there is a situation, a very serious situation like this, they don't stop investigating. And so what they found, of course, is that there was new evidence that came forward to suggest that the individuals that were in custody were not responsible for the crime. I am proud of the fact that they brought that forward immediately. That's certainly an integrity moment for that unit and for the service to do the right thing. And that's obviously what they did. That resulted in the Crown Prosecution Service there staying the charges. So obviously I recognize there will be impacts to that and that was the reason for the apology and the apology was certainly sincere. It is, it is a complicated situation for sure. It's not a situation where, you know, you know, somebody was profiling two people that were walking down the street that were unconnected to the, to the, to the situation. There was much, much more to it than that, that actually led investigators to believe and formulate reasonable and probable grounds to believe that the two young men were responsible. As I'd mentioned previously, there's, as part of the system, there's the ability to get charge approval from the Crown and present the evidence that you have. And the evidence available at the time obviously led the Crown to believe also that, that the two young men were responsible for the crime. So your question, you know, your question, your point is a good one and I take it and that's the reason for the apology. I think you also asked and quite rightly, you know, what will we do in a situation like this to prevent this from happening again? And I, and I would say, like I say, as much as this is an unfortunate situation, fortunately, it's a rare situation. But what we will do or what we've committed to doing was an independent review of the circumstances that led up to the formulation of the grounds to lay the charges and the laying of the charges. And as part of that also, we'll look at the issue of whether or not there was any evidence or concerns relative to racial profiling involved in the situation as well. That piece of work will be actually done by the RCMP. They've agreed to take that on for us, so it won't be the CPS doing the work. And then we'll look forward to the report that comes back from that to take away any lessons that might be able to be learned from this. So thank you for your question.
Thank you. I will just add that the Commission is also interested in the outcome of the report and we'll look forward to hearing that in the future. So thank you for the question. Is there another person?
Yes, Chair. So the next speaker is Merle Teres, Tereski, sorry. And he would like to speak briefly about protests. You should be able to speak at this point.
Hi, can you hear me there?
We can, yes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, thank you. Members of the Commission, Chief of Police, Deputy Chiefs, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the rallies that have been taking place in front of City Hall. By not speaking to you tonight on behalf of any particular organization, but as a property-owning taxpayer in the city of Calgary since '05, I have witnessed these demonstrations from across the street and I'm breaking my presentation up into two areas, both bylaw and then actions. First of all, I want to deal with bylaws on the CPS webpage where it says how to protest in Calgary. It states you may not block roads in the issue of your protests. I think if any of you caught the news last Sunday, the Palestinians were clearly blocking roads, laying out prayer carpets and numerous other activities, blocking the roads of commuters across this city. That took place. They may not wear masks in the protest arenas. The Palestinians have been wearing what is called a kaffiyah, which is a long scarf covering their face. Only their eyes are visible when they're making threats. There has also been threats and intimidation at these rallies. I will also touch on that in the second part. The city of Calgary also states under booking, you may not book the area in front of City Hall on behalf of an organization more than one time a month. They've been doing it for the past four Sundays. And if you go down there and witness it yourself, you will see it's the same people. And I find it interesting that their last booking, they called it a peace and love rally. I was pounding that on the moment. It is anything but peace and love. Now I want to take, take you to what has been happening in front of City Hall and what has been happening across the street from City Hall. On one side of the street is the Jewish community of this city. They have nothing but signs of pictures of hostages that are still being held by Hamas. There are pictures of the hostages and they have signs saying, please release these people. That's it. The others is nation-state flags of the state of Israel. Again, that's it. On the other side of the street, however, if any of you have an opportunity to come down and witness what is going on, it is anything short of hate. I witnessed this past Sunday a sign and I pointed it out to the sergeant that was doing the videotaping. It had a picture of the Star of David and beside it was a swastika. I don't think I need to tell anyone of the Jewish persuasion in the Calgary Police Service what it means to equate Nazism with the Star of David, having lost 6 billion people in the Holocaust. Further, I saw another sign and had the Star of David and it had a trash bin. All across North America, this has been a symbol, the Jews are trash and need to be thrown into the garbage. Police officers approached this Arab man, asked him to take the sign down several times. He refused and they let the sign stay. I want to ask members of the Commission and counselors, how do you think that makes the Jewish community feel? When they are crated with trash, when they are told that the Holocaust is somehow their fault or their garbage? This goes on week after week. I want to close with this and this is what really, the two aspects are really concerning to me. It was shown on Twitter last Sunday, members of the Arab community yelling at police officers, we know our rights, we know our rights under the Charter. What they seem to forget is the responsibilities as Canadians or new people to this country. That seems to be left out. That's very troubling. The other very troubling part is seeing teenagers on the Arab side, no young, no older than 14 years old, putting their fingers in the air towards the Jewish community, yelling obscenities, pointing at their, at their watch, saying it's time, meaning it's time, Jews. All along, their parents are standing right there beside them and participating in it. This has gone on now for four Sundays in a row. And I do not understand how in a city like this, this can be continued to go on. And I will close with this and I'll welcome any questions. I know Commissioner Heather Campbell talked about radicalization and hate recently in her remarks early in this meeting. I agree with you. And there is a lot of hate going on at those rallies towards the Jewish community. Finally, at the very end of the rally last Sunday, the Jewish young girls approximately 15, 16 years old were standing on the street corner and yelling across the street, we love you, we love you, we don't hate you. Do you know what the response was from the other side? You're murderers, you're killers, we hate you, we hate you. And do you know who was saying that? The youngest people across the street. It made these Jewish girls cry. They came up to me and they go, why do they hate us? Why do they hate us? They're not talking about the politics of what's going on in Israel. They were looking at a Jew and saying, we hate you. I urge a lot of the members of this Commission to come down. You know, I've dealt with Deputy Chief Toffek before in the anti-vax area and we had some really good opportunities to talk. You can't say that there's nothing that can be done because it was taken care of. The cities saw it in injunction, they stopped these harassing rallies from taking place and they made the right moves. How long, maybe the weather will solve this and we get to minus 30 and the rallies won't go on. But I looked at the long-term forecast, we're nowhere near that type of weather for the next two Sundays. What is your approach to stop these hate rallies from continuing on the other side of the street in front of City Hall? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. It, it is a very, very difficult situation. The protests are emotionally charged and they are reflecting what's happening in another part of the world. They will very likely continue as that conflict continues. The primary aim of the police is to protect public safety and keep the peace. That's the first part. And then the second part is that the officers are there to allow people to protest in a safe and lawful way. I understand your points about bylaws and we can talk about that a little bit more, perhaps there are specific comments about that. But on one hand, COVID-19, Calgarians said that they wanted the police to be more active in trying to balance the rights of the protesters with the rights of others in the community. And yet during the recent Eritrean protests, the key there was to ensure that the communities were safe. And that is the first, the first goal, the first vision. So while it's an extremely difficult situation and everything is very emotionally charged, the police are doing their best to manage these protests. I think they're doing a reasonable job, given the situation, what's going on. And it's, it's a very difficult situation. And with that, I will say I understand your frustrations and I understand the concern for this carrying on. And I will turn it over to others who might want to make a comment and perhaps Chief Newfeld or others to just make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Tereski. You and I have not met there, but thank you for sharing your, your perspective. And I would echo the Chair's comments about the situation being highly emotional. Both communities are struggling through the difficult situations that are occurring in the Middle East and the images and, and you know, that continues to evolve as well day-to-day. And the situation on the ground here in Calgary evolves very similarly. It seems to be a little bit different from week to week in ways that if you're out there, you, you may understand. If you're not, you, you probably wouldn't understand. You know, you mentioned that, you know, nobody's supposed to be on the road and this type of thing. I think what we've seen too is that at times the groups become very large. We've been dealing with groups that become very large and then on top of it, there's a counter protest or a commensurate rally or a rally that's going on at the same time. So sometimes we do have to allow people to use the roads if that's safer. And so that does definitely cause an inconvenience for folks, particularly if you're living downtown as you are. So that's, that's acknowledged. We've been managing, you know, the protest in relation to the Middle East since October 7th, I believe. And they've gone on each weekend and then, you know, prior to that, it was, it was other types of protests. Your reference to the bylaw, you know, you're quite right about what the bylaws are in the city. There's a balance to be struck and I sense you understand that between, you know, the constitutional right to gather and, you know, to assemble and free speech. So there, there's that balance as well, even though we may have it in our bylaws, it may not be always enforceable. You know, as the, as the weeks have gone on here, we've seen a change in levels of cooperation at times. We've seen changes in tactics. You know, gone from sort of just regular protests to some more direct action, I think, to try and gather a little bit more attention. And so we're managing that each week. We, we, we work very hard to work with community to try to understand what's going to occur and to see whether we can allow that in a way that would, would, you know, not, not result in an unreasonable level of disruption to folks like yourself and people downtown. But I can say there will always be some level of disruption. When you're talking about managing large crowds at rallies and demonstrations in the downtown, there's, there's going to be no way to get away from disruption all around. We have as well done a, what I think is a, quite a good job of getting information out ahead of time to residents and people who might go downtown when we know there's going to be rallies. So we can tell people to expect it on Sunday afternoon and to, to avoid the area if you're not interested in the rallies and find an alternate route if you're traveling through there. And that's not really because it's not safe, because some people think that. It's just because there will be inconveniences for folks when they're down there. So I guess I would just end there by saying, as you're seeing things, our folks are collecting evidence down there, as you're probably aware as well, speaking with the Crown Prosecution Service around what we're seeing. You know that the bar is very high when you refer to, you know, everything short of hate crime. The bar is very high for that. And so we continue to speak with the Crown about these types of things as well and, and we continue to work with both sides and community. I would recommend that if you have concerns, reach out to the Community Resource Officer in one district and that could be a good resource for you as well, given that you live down there. So thank you for your, thank you for your comments.
Okay, Chair, we have two more speakers left. The next one is Mr. Rajkutan. He has a question related to the investigative support crime trend report. You should be able to speak, yeah.
Hi there, can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
I have actually four questions. I don't need an answer right away, but if someone could get back to me on them. Very quickly, the words under-resourced have come up a few times in this meeting. And I may have a solution for you all, but I need your support as per my questions. I would like a review of the Provincial Civil Forfeiture Act. I want to table a case forward to the provincial government. Would it be possible to get some input from the CPS on what is working and what is not working on a municipal level? So this, I could put my case forward to my provincial MP and to ensure the CPS has updated legislation that may support its work. To give context, 18 years ago, the Proceess of Crime Act in the UK allowed law enforcement agencies to keep a portion of the money confiscated from organized crime, drugs, money laundering, et cetera. We do have legislation placed here, but I think there's an opportunity to revisit this. My second question is, I'll be able to look at a case to send a couple of officers to the National Police Improvement Agency in the United Kingdom to learn and exchange knowledge in the area of organized crime, drugs, civil forfeiture and investigation techniques. I know there are partnerships and training international law enforcement agencies. So my question is, I'm, I'm putting a request for this to be looked at to counsel via my counselor, Evan Spencer. I would like input from the CPS and if they can direct someone to speak with me so I can table this case properly and advocate funding for this. My reasoning is a key part of dealing with crime is to treat some of these organizations as businesses and to take money away. So like no enterprise can operate without funding. My third question is, it's about the excellent presentation of the transit and data trends. This was absolutely fantastic. But I'd like to point out, I see this more of a societal and political issue rather than policing. Are we able to pull data on how long the, the police are spending on dealing with such low-level issues and then calculate the cost by average salary? Then I believe we have a case to put to counsel for this and this becomes a case for better legislation and funding also. And fourth, very quickly, traffic management was mentioned. Has the CPS looked at how UK law enforcement conducts road traffic management? There may be training and cross-knowledge opportunities that may protect and save officers' lives. I know this because I did part of the course 11 years ago. And my reasoning for this is there are many times I've seen officers pulled over people in a way that puts their lives at really high risk. So I advocate for better training or updated material. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those questions. We will turn them over to CPS and ask them to reply. We will turn them over to CPS and ask them to reply to those. Perhaps you can get in contact with the office and make sure that you have a, a way of connecting with them. Thank you for those. They're too long for us to be able to handle this evening, but we can look into them for you.
Hi Raj, yeah, I would just say that if you reach out to three of the four, if you, if you, if you reach out on the general line and just ask to be connected with Acting Deputy Chief Alif, we can look and see what kind of information you're looking for and can see what we can provide as far as your business case goes. And as far as the cross-jurisdictional training opportunities, we do do that for sure. And we do have connections with the UK as well, so, but thank you for the suggestion for sure, and, and I wish you well.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Our last speaker for tonight is Raven Moon Crocker, and she would like to speak to Indigenous Relations Officers. You should be able to speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Wonderful. So thank you very much. My name is Raven Moon Crocker. I'm a member of the Truth and Reconciliation Team of the Calgary Alliance for the Common Good. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present today. Thank you for providing a safe place where we can all share, listen with respect. We are excited to tell the Police Commission about the approaching resolution of many of the projects we have been working towards with the Calgary Police Service. We immediately wish to specifically thank Superintendent Reshid, Deputy Chief McLennan, and Chief Newfeld for their responsive attitudes towards the Indigenous issues which we have championed here. As we have mentioned before, sometimes the questions have been difficult, but we have had support or we have had several mutual successes which we know benefits all of us. Given her ongoing support here on the commission, it is unfortunate that Marilyn North Pagan isn't present to hear the celebration. Specifically, there are now four Indigenous community mobilizers employed in the CPS whose roles are central around bridging the gap between citizen and, citizen communities and the CPS. Of course, these four are focused on the, the First Nations and other Indigenous interactions in Calgary. And given the prevalence of that population incarcerated in Alberta, the hope is to reduce the need for arrests through their participation and intervention. This is why it makes sense that between these four of them, they have backgrounds from both Treaty VII and Treaty VIII nations, B.C. and Ontario nations, RCMP, Licensed Practical Nursing, Mental Health, and Social Work professions. As their job describes, the community mobilizers serve as police ambassadors embedded within the community. They will promote two-way engagement and planning to support improved police services designs. Sorry, support improved police service designs to Indigenous, underrepresented, and visible minority communities. Closer to our heart are the current Indigenous Resource Officers on staff with the CPS. Sworn officers intended to be available also for the participation and de-escalation of the direct contacts between the police and our Indigenous brothers and sisters that happens far too regularly in Canada and Calgary, pardon me, and surrounding areas. The RRO head, Sergeant Julian Klein, recently described his team as being from Treaty I and VIII lands with extensive experience in Indigenous protocols and culture and over forty years CPS experience between the three of them. Sadly, we needed to contact Sergeant Klein around recent events amongst our own, and he proved to be a responsive and sympathetic ear to the IRO's possible assistance in the tragic aftermath. It's unfortunate that they were so immediately necessary only weeks after our notification of their roles, but that very fact points out the need of their existence. A function detailed for the Indigenous mobilizers seems relevant to all Calgary Police Service members interested in this rich area of development. They look for ways to promote open and honest discussion between police and community members, the CPS Advisory Board's circle, the Anti-Racism Action Committee, district commanders, and community resource officers. The CPS recently had an additional budget approved in the recent adjustments. It is our hope that this funding will be adequately and appropriately used to fund continuing recruitment of Indigenous officers. We can only hope we have contributed to such conversations and are excited to be meeting with these new members. And the fourth Indigenous Resource Officer in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's, it's nice to hear some positive input, and we really appreciate it. So thank you very much for your comments, and we look forward to hearing as these initiatives carry on and evolve as they go through the next months and years. So thank you very much for your comments. Is there anything else?
No, Chair, that concludes our public session.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, we will take a very, I'm thinking sixty seconds to get ourselves organized for the chief and I to take the media availability. Those who would like to stay, you're welcome to stay. We'll have a short dinner break afterwards. Those who would like to leave, if you could leave fairly quickly and avoid coming in and out as we get through the, the media part. So thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next piece.
For members of the media, we are just quickly rejigging the room here, and then we'll get to your questions. If you do have a question, please raise your hand in Zoom, and we will call on you, and we will get through quickly. Okay, we are all set. So we will start with you, Adam Toy. I think you're the, the last person standing here, so please go ahead with your questions.
Uh, great, thank you so much for hanging around to take some of my questions. First one is from a colleague of mine. I know it looks like, this is a question for both the Commission Chair and the Police Chief. Just wondering with regards to an upcoming meeting with members of community in the Northeast. I'm wondering what, there was already some, some, some opinion expressed earlier about the, the, the level of trust and, and the like with, with that community. I'm just wondering what kind of steps or thoughts that you have with regards to what appears to me to be a, an area for improvement in trust with, specifically with that community, the, the, the Eritrean community, and also following this, this this shooting with, that involved the brothers, or not involved the brothers, but that these two brothers had became involved with regards to charges. You'll pardon me, it's, as you know, it's been a long meeting.
Adam, are you referring to the public meeting that Councilor Dollywall is hosting? Well, I think we're just a bit confused as to what meeting you're referring to.
Yes, that's, that's the meeting with Councilor Dollywall. I believe it's this evening.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know very much about it, so.
Well, I can just add a little bit for sure. I would, I would say this, I, it's unfortunate that actually the meeting ended up being held on the same night as the commission meeting because we certainly would have liked to attend. I know we definitely do have representation there this evening. Oh, sorry about that. We do have representation at the meeting this evening for sure. And so anytime we have an opportunity to get in front of community, we do. As you know, we've had, we've invested for years and years and years. That's the DNA of the Calgary Police Service to work with community. So things will happen over, over a long life where you'll have challenges, like any relationship, I guess. And so I think what I find is when we get in the room and we're able to talk through things and hear both sides of things, we, we usually can get to a good place. So I'm, I still in speaking with members of the Eritrean community. Yeah, I have, I have, I'm quite optimistic actually that we'll be able to work through the challenges. And also the other thing to remember in the midst of some of the challenges that we hear, there's many good things happening also. And I know the community understands that. So anyway, I continue to be open to participating as we all are in those meetings, and I think they'll take us a good place. Thanks, Adam.
I would just add to that, that I think that that's something that is actually recognition of the trust that there is in the police service that the request for the community meeting would be made and that the service would acknowledge the request and get together with the community. So I think that those ongoing conversations are extremely important, and they'll come over and over again as, as things evolve in the city over the years. So I, I think it's a good sign, and I think it's something that we encourage the service to do is, is to be involved with the community as much as they can.
Do you have a follow-up, Adam?
Um, yeah, I had a couple of the questions. One more on this topic. For the chief, if you were able to be there this evening, what would you say specifically to members of the community who are, who may be concerned with this apparent rash of daylight shootings and stabbings? I know there were some, some comments earlier from other members of the service about the statistics around these events. But I'm wondering what you would say to reassure members, especially of the community, especially up in the Northeast, who may be concerned for their safety in the everyday?
Yeah, thanks. That's an important issue, and my message would simply be to convey what the service is doing in light of these issues, and also the opportunities that may be there for the community to work with the service in cases where there is, you know, increased numbers of shootings in a community or whatever. I think there's more opportunities than there's ever been before for community to work with police to solve some of these problems and, and even get to the root cause of some of the problems. So I think some of the shootings that have occurred have really shaken the community, and the Northeast is, is one of the communities for sure. And so I think we have to take that all as a, as an alarm and an opportunity to get together and do everything we can to be able to drive those numbers back down. So that's, I guess, what I would say, Adam, not being there.
Um, and sorry, last question I have for you with regards to something you brought up earlier, Chief, with the review that the RCMP is going to be doing following that Marlborough shooting in the middle of this month. I'm wondering if you can explain a little bit more of what the RCMP's role is going to be in this review? What have you asked them to do?
Yeah, we're going to get together to finalize the terms of reference. I now have a commitment actually to go ahead and do it, that they will take it on, so that's good. And again, what we'd be looking at is just the chain of events that led up to investigators believing they had reasonable and probable grounds to lay charges for the homicide. And also, we did hear from community concerns, as we did tonight, about the potential for racial profiling of, of members of the black community. So I think that should be scoped in as well. But we'll certainly look at the finalized terms of reference that actually do what they need to do for the service to encompass those community confidence pieces, and then also allow the RCMP to take that away and, as an independent body, do the work that they would need to do and report back.
And just to be sure, that's separate from the public inquiry that you've committed to?
Sorry, I didn't commit to a public inquiry there. When I did the apology, I said that we would do an independent review of that to find out what lessons there were. So I don't have the ability to commit to a public inquiry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will, we'll move on to Tiffany Goodwin from City TV. Tiffany, you should be able to speak now. We still can't hear Tiffany if you're speaking.
Sorry.
That's okay, there you go, now again.
Okay, so sorry. Okay, so my question is, over the past couple of weeks, there's been some criticism from a particular criminologist here in the city saying that there needs to be better communication from police in regards to these violent incidents, going as far as saying that police are potentially downplaying the severity of the, of the risks when these happen in public areas. I just wanted to get your thoughts on that in terms of the communication piece, like, you know, how are you, do, do you guys think you're doing a good job? What are you guys looking to do in the future in terms of communicating, you know, just what's been going on in terms of the violence that we've been seeing as of late?
Yeah, thanks, Tiffany. There has been a spate of violence for sure. And at times like this, I don't think you can over-communicate. We've tried a number of things. As you know, I've seen you out at a number of press releases where I've gone out on scene. We've been trying to communicate very directly with the community from the locations where this is happening. I can tell you, I didn't necessarily read Professor King's thoughts as a, as a criticism as much as he talked about it's powerful when we go and do that. I think what we're looking at now is different ways that we can communicate because there has been a number of incidents occurring in our city and others. And I guess I would want to, want to say for sure that we're not downplaying that. I think people see it, it's, it's very, it's, there's a high level of interest in it when it's reported, as there should be. And so we should all be very, very concerned about it, I believe. When we say that the numbers are down statistically, that, that things don't look so much different than they have in the past five years, that doesn't mean that when somebody's firing a firearm in a public place, that that's not dangerous. It's, that's the very definition of dangerous. So at the end of the day, we're looking right now at different ways that we can communicate with the community to get the information out there and, and just looking at ways of being a bit more innovative. As I say, I don't think we can communicate enough on this, and so we will have to find different ways and means. And the public meeting tonight is another example. I commend the counselors as leaders in the community for hosting events like this right in communities that have been impacted. And of course, we're, we're there participating in those meetings as well, so I'll leave it there.
Do you have a follow-up, Tiffany?
Oh, no, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, great. We will move on then to Darren Cross from LiveWire. Darren, you should be able to speak now.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
We sure can.
Awesome. Chief, you just mentioned that some of the Northeast shootings have shaken the community. And I know that, that the gun violence in the city has been an issue for, for a while, and it's on a lot of people's minds. I'm just curious, is there any element of needing to come to a resolution or quick charges that may have led police to, I guess, rush to judgment in the case of the two teen boys?
Well, with the information that I'm aware of, Darren, I would say no. But let's not forget that we're going to have a, a review of that to look and, and make sure that that's not the case. But, but I will say separate from that, that when you have a situation where there's been a brazen shooting like that, and many people have seen the video now, you know, when that happens in community, that's dangerous. And so if you have reasonable probable grounds to lay charges, I would suggest that it's prudent to do so in order to end that. When I watched that video, I would say that the person who pulled the trigger there was a very special kind of person, and there's a very small number of people in our community, a community of 1.4 million who would pull the trigger like that. And I would say that we would need to take those people off the street as quickly as we possibly can when we have evidence to do it.
Just a quick follow-up. I know that there is obviously a review coming, but is there any immediate action internally that the CPS is undertaking in the interim? That, you know, just kind of, kind of make sure that those checks and balances are in place? Or is it, we've got a job to do and we're going to continue doing it the way that we best know how to do it?
Well, one thing that I will say is that our homicide investigators in the Calgary Police Service are extremely talented. This is not something that we've seen happen frequently. I can't even remember when we've had a situation like this. So I want to keep those folks focused on the job at hand. We've seen and talked about the spate of gun violence and the importance of taking people who are willing to pull the trigger in Calgary off the street. So I don't see a need to do anything immediate. I can tell you, they will be their hardest critics. But also the independent review done by the RCMP, that can happen very quickly as well. So again, that's something that will happen in a timely fashion that will inform things. And I can tell you, those folks are as keen, if there's any lessons to be learned here, that they can take away. They're as keen as anybody to take those away. So I'm, I'm proud of the work they do. I'm, I'm proud of the work they do and I want to keep them focused on murderers.
Okay, that's Tiffany. You have your hand up still. Is that a new question or an old hand? Oh, it looks like it's an old hand. Okay, then that concludes our media availability. Thank you, everybody, for coming.